I got seven o'clock, I'm calling the June 2022 Casco Township Board Trustees Meeting to order. The first thing is a pledge to the flag of the United States of America, Mr. Hopkins. Be our color card. You in the front or?
Right here, it's good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we do justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everybody. We kind of got a packed agenda. I don't see Mr. Saff yet, he's supposed to come and brief us on the renewal of our insurance policy. I suggest that once you go, if he, if we, he's not here yet, we, yeah, we belong and then he could be held up. There's construction 59. Okay, okay. All right. Consent, first item consent agenda. Okay. We have a couple additions. We have item Q, network computers, network computer bill for ransomware attack. And 3A resolution 22-13, that was about our, for Mrs. Coppins was here last week, last month about
The dogs.
About the ending golden period. So we had to put it into official motion. Now. Okay, do I have any other corrections or additions?
I just have a small correction on the balance of minutes.
Okay. Okay, the time. Okay.
It's not, it's made up.
It's all else.
It's made up.
Okay. If I can get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the additions and corrections presented.
Okay, we have the motion to approve the consent agenda with the two addition and the correction noted on the minutes. Support?
Support.
We have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. First thing on business is number high-tech IT system renovation plan.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'll just sit down.
Yeah, everybody.
So for you, for those of you that don't know me, I'm at A.S.A. James, I work for High Tech System Service and vice president, sales and marketing over there. I handle Casco Township as one of my accounts. We recently took you over, which is good because we're right here at Casco Township, so it's convenient for everybody. I'll kind of go through a couple things, tell you about what we're, what we've done already and kind of some of the ideas of what we want to do moving forward. So we'll, we'll move forward with that. So our agenda today, we'll, I'm gonna talk about the risk score. So what it is, is when we first came into the township here, we did a network analysis. It's used by a, a third-party tool, that's an industry standard tool that kind of looks at your entire network and develops a risk score based on a wide variety of different things, whether it would be not being updated, antivirus, it could be a lot of different things. But it develops a score for anyhow. Then I'll talk about the steps we've taken so far to improve the township's existing network. And then I'll talk about future issues that we need to address. So we'll kind of take them one at a time. So your score, your risk score was 90 out of 100, which is not good, 100 is bad. So, but again, it's not uncommon, don't feel that bad. That could happen. It could be a variety of different things, it could be outdated OSs or things not being patched properly. So it could be a wide variety of different things. But there was some risk involved with, with what we found. And again, third-party tools, so it's independent of us, industry standard tool, it spits out all these reports. So what we've done to fix those things is several things. So these are completely solutions that we've already done for you guys. When we came in originally, you just had a localized backup that was on a hard drive, a little tiny hard drive like this, that's really designed to back up like laptops and desktops, it's not designed to back up the server. In addition, that you're taking them onsite, offsite, so you're bumping them around. Nobody's monitoring to see if those drives are good or bad, so you got some bad backups and things like that. We've moved you to a cloud solution. What the cloud solution does is patch your data from the cloud. The advantage of that is it's offsite, so in the event of catastrophe, the building burns down or whatever, your data is still up in the cloud. We can spin up what's called a virtual server in the cloud and you guys can still access your data and still work. We had a scenario kind of similar to you guys, you guys got hit with ransomware one time. Our client got hit with ransomware, they corrupted everything in the building, but it didn't corrupt the cloud backups, so we were able to bring that data back down and have them up and going without any data loss. So that's some of the things, so that's already been implemented now. We probably want to add to that, that's one of the future things we want to do, they can make what's called a BER server, backup and disaster recovery server, we're gonna talk about that more later. The second thing we did was just probably one of the most important things is secure your network with a tier-one hardware firewall. You guys were using just the Comcast basic firewall that comes with Comcast service. It's not really the firewall. It has what's called NAT, which is Network Adder's translation, which is a really basic, basic firewall that probably every 15-year-old kid could hack around. In addition to that, one of the ports on that firewall were left wide open to the world. And based on what we're thinking, that's how you get ransomware is through that firewall. So since then, we've put in a firewall from a company called Sophos. Sophos is one of the leading security companies in the world. Sophos is one of the leading security companies in the world, that's all they do is security for anti-ransomware firewalls and things like that. We've closed all those security loopholes for you, so now you're, you're much better off, you're not as open to the, to being hacked if you want to. The next thing we did is we secured the users and workstations with our security tool stack. That consists of antivirus, anti-nailware, anti-ransomware software that's running on your computers all the time, it's being updated. Again, it's made by the same company, Sophos, so they kind of talk to one another, the firewall and things like that. And we put another thing on there, that's XDR, which is Extend Discovery and Retention, which allows it to even look at files further. So we have a bunch of security tools in place now that weren't in place before that will help prevent this happening. As an example, Intercept decks, which is loaded on their deck, isolated, if it gets on one workstation, it'll isolate the workstation, so it doesn't spread across your going down. We set up a password policy for you guys. Prior to us coming in, you didn't really have a password policy, the passwords that you had were really weak, which is kind of important. If you, I know it's not fun, though we like changing your passwords, but it's the reality of the world today. We set up a proactive monitoring for your workstations and servers, so we have a piece of software that 24/7/365 watches your network and it proactively goes out and looks for problems. It's intuitive software, so it can sometimes fix the problems itself. Otherwise, if it can't, it notifies my engineers at my office. We have what's called a NACA Network Operating Center at our office, where engineers sit there and that's all they do is remediation for problems that people have all day long, as well as we have outside services as well. So that's now, all your workstations are now being monitored, all your, all your servers are being monitored, so you go in there. We set up regularly scheduled patching for the workstations and servers. They were being patched before, but I don't think they were being patched on any type of schedule. We do it every Wednesday for workstations, every Sunday for servers. So what happens is these, the hackers are always ahead of the software companies because they come out with new things every day. So these manufacturers like Microsoft and things like that put out security patches and update patches for features and functions. So every week we update your system, so you're on the most current patch to mitigate the chance of being hacked, as well as any features or functions, just to kind of keep you up, up to date. So that's always happened behind the scenes every week for you guys, as part of your degree. And then we set up the Sophos web filtering, which is just a basic web filtering that can be used for filtering out sites that you don't want your employees to go to. So that's what we've completed already, so it's been a short period of time, I think it's been around a month, so we got kind of all that in a month. So in that month, we kind of secured your data and secured all your network securities down, we kind of lock it down so that you don't run into the same problems you ran into before. The server issue, the existing server was cloned. It wasn't really a proper server. If you take a look at it, I guess you can't really zoom in on those pictures, but it's this little cube of a box. And it has a sound card in it, which your server doesn't need a sound card, and a microphone cord, and a handle, so it wasn't really a server. It was a computer that you load the server software on. The other problem that could be a clone is the warranty on it, it's only as good as the company you do work with. If they go out of business, you have no warranty on it or anything like that. The other thing is, we're also set up where they're using Active Directory and group policy. Active Directory, group policy are used for pushing down security policies, monitoring users, things like that. So I could say, okay, I want, you know, her, her to have access to this information, but I don't want him to have access to this information. And, you know, with, with the municipality, that can be important too, because you kind of have a revolving door, people coming in and out with elections and different things like that. So that's really not being utilized the way it should be. So what we're recommending here tonight, and one of the things on the agenda is replacing, so you can see, the top one is the server you guys have now, prior to this, and the bottom one is the server you're going to be getting. That's a tier-one, industry-standard HP Proline server, which is the largest installed base server anywhere in the world. We only sell tier-one solutions, so High Tech one out of business tomorrow, your manufacturer's warranty would be good on that, any Hewlett Packard authorized service center can give us it. And you can, the picture speaks for itself, so I mean, you can see the difference in what, what one should look like versus what you have.
Gee, how big is that exactly?
It's, it's only about the size of the desktop. This is, this is a, what, they have a few versions below this, but this is more of an entry-level server. Because you guys only have like 10, 12 employees, so you don't need a huge one, I mean, they go up very, very large. So this is more, a little bit bigger than the, the size of a desktop, but you can kind of see over there, you see where those red things are, those are hot swap drives as an example. That's one thing that you want in a server. So in, in the way we're gonna be putting your server, we, we do what's called a RAID five configuration. Where, oh, this is technically RAID six configuration, where you have three drives and a hot spare. So the first half of your data is kept on the one drive, the second half of your data is kept on the second drive, all your data is kept on the third drive. So if any one of those drives goes down, you're still up and going. And we have a fourth drive, which is a hot spare that can kick in and, and it would rebuild that array, so we would just have to walk in if one of those drives go bad, because drives go bad, that's almost common, they pull out the drive, pop in a drive, and away we go. No downtime. So it's, it's a different animal than what you have now. You have what's called, your current system has what's called a mirror RAID or RAID zero, it's two hard drives that are identical. So if one goes down, you're still up, but it's, it's not hot spot, they have to bring the server down and shut it down and pull the parts out. It's an entirely different animal. So, and kind of where you came from to where you're at now, I know it's a big shift and a big adjustment, but it's, it's very different. We're, our whole thing is we want to be as proactive as possible to prevent anything from happening, solve the problem before it becomes a problem, is what we're looking to do. So that's kind of the server we're recommending. And then with that, we're recommending setting up Active Directory properly, group policies and things like that, so we can push securities down to make sure people aren't getting into things they shouldn't be getting into. And it's easier to manage that network moving forward. Future solutions we talked about, so as I came in, because there was a lot of issues here, I talked to Joe, I talked to Jennifer, I said, you know, hey, I don't want to scare you away, and we can kind of do these increases because I know there's budgets and different things like that. So I did talk to them and said, hey, you know, security data is critical, securing your network is critical, we need to do those right away, everything else we can kind of do as we go. I'm gonna make recommendations. So one of the recommendations that you do have to quote for, but again, it doesn't have to be done today, because your data is being backed, we recommend what's called a backup and disaster recovery server. It's a separate little server, it's not as large as that, but what it does is it backs up the data from your server to that and then from that to the cloud. The advantage to that is if, for some reason, your main server went down, recovering that locally as opposed to pulling it down from the cloud is much faster, so recovery time is much faster. As well as I can also spin up a virtual server on that one as well, so you could be up and going. That's kind of what we recommend, most people do, there's a cost involved in it, so it's something we can do in the future, but you guys have a proposal already for it, we don't have to deal with it now, but this is something that we should think about too. The other thing is installing infrastructure, so you can kind of see in the bottom there, there's cables laying on the, well, the red drive is what you were backing up to, so that's what you should be backing up to. The, you can kind of see there's some cables on the floor, you have several switches all over the place in there that are, are done. Not best policy, creates a bunch of failure points, it slows down your network. So what we're gonna recommend eventually, again, and this is something you can do in the future, is recable it, right, where you have one switch, that switch we have what's called POE or Power Over Ethernet, which would allow you to power devices like cameras and your telephones and access points and things like that. Like right now, I think you have power bricks on your, on your phones, you can go away from those, that's kind of the way things are moving. A tier-one wireless solution, you do have the Evacuity. It's a step down from tier-one, it's not horrible, but it's not great. If we did a tier-one solution, what we could do, it could be a managed wireless solution, where we could segment your network off and have a guest network, so like people that come to the board meetings could connect to the Wi-Fi, but have no access to your data or have any ability to get into your network. You have a separate private network for the people that are here. That also avoids people coming in your parking lot and connecting to your wireless and different things like that. So it's just a much more secure and manageable solution. All your workstations are clones, again, which I mentioned the problem of clones before. Some of them are aged, but I would recommend, and we can talk about this, developing a technology refresh plan, what I recommend for, for easy math, but you guys can do anything you want. The recommended replacements, like a lot of workstations, every three years. You guys probably don't need to replace them every three years because you're just doing BSNA and some other things, but let's just for the math purposes, we'll say three years. You should replace 33% of your, of your fleet every year then, so then the oldest thing is three years old and they're always under warranty. You can amortize that over five or seven or whatever the case may be. But that way you have a plan in place and you're replacing them, not only you can budget for it, but you're also replacing them, you want to replace them as opposed to, oh, this broke, I have to replace it.
Is it possible, like, myself as supervisor, and I got more efficient if I had a laptop instead of?
Yeah, you got a laptop.
Yeah, that would be.
I would recommend a couple things, you could have some laptops, that's one thing I recommend, I've walked around here too, a lot of people like that, dual monitors and things like that, which monitors are relatively inexpensive to do. And then like, I don't know what your, I have looked closely at the existing systems, but in the future, when we sell new systems to you with our Hewlett Packard, they come standard with the ability to do two monitors out of the box and things like that. So those are just little tweaks and improvements that can make your jobs easier and better. I recommend workstation power protection. We're in Casco, we have brownouts all the time over there, I don't know if you guys get it. I would put a, a little UPS battery on there, and what it allows you to do is if there was a power outage, it allows you to shut down your computer with, without a crash, you hired, without a power outage, and then you won't get any corrupt data, you don't lose any data. As part of the server proposal, we have also included a UPS on that for the server. And that comes with a software that's called Powershoot, and it's a smart UPS. And what it does is if it shuts off, if the power shuts off, even if nobody's here, it'll automatically, if it waits a certain amount of time until, how long to wait, and the battery power is getting low, it'll automatically shut your server down automatically, so that doesn't have that hard to crash, so you don't have any data corruption. You know, I, I guess you guys are also talking about the possibility in the future of doing some construction here. We might want to do a new MDF, which stands for Game Data Facility Location for that server, because that closet kind of gets hot. We can keep all the switches and different things like that in there, we would run what we would call a home run cable from there to wherever we decide we're gonna put the server in the future, but again, that's a future thing that you guys don't have to worry about tonight.
In the meantime, do you recommend we have like a fan in there?
I'd recommend cutting a vent up at the top, and this is why hotter is gonna rise. So right now, that vent's down at the bottom, nothing's getting out of there. So if you had a vent up at the top and a vent out at the bottom, it would probably circulate enough, and, you know, you guys have air in here and things like that, so it should be cooled down enough.
But they do have those crawl space fans.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would probably help, but I think a, a big thing would be getting that vent cut in the top.
Right, that's why.
There's also, you also have a register down by the bottom where your air conditioner should kind of kick in, so it feels, you have cold air in the bottom one and the hot air can go up the top. Right now, the hot air really is nowhere to go.
Yeah. Something to draw the hot air.
But again, you know, and then in the future, when we do get more of a dedicated room, this could be five, six, seven years down the road or whatever, we replace the server, we could get like an actual net shelter enclosure, where we can rack mount the switches and rack mount the servers. I showed these guys some pictures of what that looks like. And they make smaller ones for, for sizes of entities like you, but for what we're doing now, we're sticking with what you have now. So I'm trying to utilize as much of your existing stuff as possible to keep the cost down, and why still making sure we're moving in the right direction.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So you guys have purchased these before, but I, everybody on the board probably doesn't know about this or hasn't heard about this. We offer prepaid time blocks for services outside our contract, like new installations like the server and things like that. It lowers your discounted rate, it's just we reward you for prepaid. They never go bad, they never expire, you can use them for any type of services and things like that, so we've been offering it for the township. There's ones that range from 10 all the way up to 1,000 hours, you know, if you want to. So we can, we can talk more about that, I know you have one now, but we've been, early on, we've been kind of chewing through it. I guess that's the other thing I didn't mention. Usually when we take over a, a new customer like this, your IT budget will soar for six months to a year, because we're, we're fixing existing problems. Then things tend to stabilize and level out and the costs go down, because there's not as much downtime, there's not as much replacement.
But they're here, they come here quick.
Yes. This is just a, what you guys did purchase, you purchased what's called our Tech Care Premium Package, which is our, our best contract available. So that consists of, with what I mentioned before, the 24 by 7, 365 monitoring, the network management, where we, you know, deal with the users, Active Directory, that sort of thing. The patch management that I spoke with, help desk, you guys can call us, there's an engineer to talk to when you need to talk to somebody. Unlimited remote support, so you can call us as often as you want, I don't care if you call us every day. The free antivirus, the free antivirus spam, the free XDR, the free contact filter, the free anti-ransomware phishing, those are all security stool stacks that help prevent any ransomware or anything like that from getting in. An annual network analysis, we'll do kind of what we did when we first came in here and do it every year, that way it identifies any future problems or anything we're dealing with. Quarterly backup checks, if we're monitoring your backup, like now we do it more than quarterly, we're doing it all the time and making sure it's good backups all the time, but we know that as well. Quarterly business user, my smiling face comes up, talks to you and says, this is the good, bad, and ugly of what we're still dealing with. And then the client portal where you guys can access service call, service history. And then in addition to that, because you had the Tech Care Premium, it has all those benefits, the Tech Care Professional, but also includes on-site service. So we have to come on-site, you know, do anything additional to come on-site if it's in relation to remediation or repair of your existing network. We kind of have what we call a proven process for success. So what we really want to deal with here is, you know, we agree for issues resolved, present project as in established timeline, set my own sign off. But the big thing is what we do is we assess your network, so we kind of take a look at what's going on in your network, what's good, what's bad, what needs improvement. We design solutions for you to, you know, improve upon that. We implement those solutions. We onboard you, which we've kind of already onboarded you with the different softwares and things like that, our security stack. Then we manage it moving forward, and then nurture you by having meetings with you, talking about technology roadmaps, different things out there. We're constantly sending our engineers to training, our sales staff's constantly going to training, so anything new in the environment. We belong to a national group of MSPs, which is managed service providers, and we all, because we're not doing competition with one another, we share, you know, best practices, trends in the, in the, in the industry and things like that. So we're always looking to be better, improve upon ourselves, improve upon what we're offering. So we're trying to stay as proactive as possible. So the whole idea behind our solution is, let's be as proactive as possible and do things on our timeline as opposed to something broken out, you scramble and fix it. So that's kind of the, that's the whole thing. So I don't know if you guys have any additional questions?
That's a lot.
It's like trivia from a fire hose, I know.
I got two questions.
Sure.
If I may have the.
Sure.
When you mentioned about the UPS provided, you know, for the server.
Yes.
Is that, is that a double conversion style UPS, or do you use double conversion?
No, I don't believe it is, it, it's just a battery-powered UPS, but it comes with a smart software, so it's got a connection, it connects also to the server itself, so it knows when the power goes out. And when the power goes out, we set a timing in the software, the software's called Powershoot, which says, okay, we know we have 15 minutes of battery power. So when it reaches 5%, start shutting it down. So the big thing is, what can happen with the server is if you have open files, which you always tend to have open files on a server unless you're redoing it. It has that hard crash where it just shuts off, it can corrupt your data, it can, it can make your server operating system not function, so it can cause all kinds of problems that we don't want hacked. Right? Plus, the other thing it does is it prevents brownouts and surges, so if power comes down through the line, it should protect for. We use a company called American Power Conversion, which is the leading industry power converting company that's out there. They offer, and that's why I said I also recommend it for workstations too, there's smaller ones on the workstations that are called backups instead of smartups. But American Power Conversion, if you register these with them, they'll give you so much money back in the event that they let power through and you got damaged because of power outage and things like that. So it's a good company, you can use them for 35 years.
And then the other question I had was, just in, in general, and this is probably way too early for you, you mentioned about essentially like a rewire.
Yes.
What, what category do you guys use typically?
Cat six is the, is the current standard right now.
Yeah.
And that's what we would use, we would, you know, most of your, and I've kind of, I'm glad you brought that up, so I kind of future proof of your servers a little bit.
Yeah.
So you, most of your workstations come standard with a one gig Ethernet connection, which, the one you do do a new switch, because that's one of the things we recommend for you too, is a managed switch. You could have that, but I'm putting a 10-gig Ethernet card in the server that I am proposing. So eventually, when we get a new switch, it'll have a couple 10-gig ports, so it'll communicate to, the server will be communicating to the internet 10 times faster and different things like that than, than would be now.
Cat six.
Yes. Category six is what it stands for. It's just, it's twisted pair Ethernet cable, it's eight wires that go into it, they have a bunch of twists, and it's just communication cable. There's been a bunch of varieties before that, it used to be Cat 5E was the standard, then Cat 5 was the standard before that, then there was Cat 3. They're up, you know, there is Cat 6, there's higher versions of Cat 6 right now, but they're not real standard and they're, they're costly. And then the other thing is, most of your workstations don't exceed one gig on their Ethernet connection now, unless you add, say, a 10-gig card. So it wouldn't really be beneficial to go above and beyond it. The main reason we're looking to, to do the rewires, you have all these switches all over the place that shouldn't be there, what they did is they would run a cable from your main data facility to an office, and then instead of running the four, five drives that they needed to run there, they would just plug in a switch and branch off of that. That slows down your network because it's gonna hop from switch to switch to switch. In addition, it creates multiple points of failure all over your network, if that switch goes down, that'd kill four, four computers potentially, or how many ever you have hooked up to it. In addition to that, the ones they're putting in there are these little Net Neer switches that are designed for houses, they're not designed for a tier-one type of network. So it's just not, it wasn't designed now.
So in other words, it's kind of like you don't plug an extension cord into.
Into another extension cord, to another extension cord, to another extension cord.
Because you have that chance of loss of power.
Which it creates more failure points and, and then they, it slows down communication, because that switch has to communicate with this switch, and it's, it's not best practice.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, I know, I wish I would have moved, I, if I would have planned better, but it had, I didn't queue up there right following your stuff.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is something we can do in the future, it's functional and it'll work now, it's just not that practice.
All right. Any other questions? Do you have?
Yay for the township. Thank you, hi, Todd.
Yeah, I think you guys see a big, from what, from where you came from to where you're at.
I think the end is half, yes.
Well, thank you for the month.
Yeah, there you go, everyone likes coffee.
Okay, all right, so I guess our next item is on business. Yes. It's, okay, this is to purchase a new server. Okay, so this is item 2B. Okay. Okay, Jane, would you like to go over that for us?
Yeah, I can go over the proposal for you, so again, as I mentioned earlier in the slide presentation, what's your previous provider at Call of the Server, it's just not a server, it's just not. They loaded server OS on it, but it's a workstation, it's not designed to do what they're trying to do. So we're selling you, or recommending selling you a HP Proline ML110, which again, Proline server is the largest installed base server anywhere in the world. That's the first item itself. So that one would, is a single processor server, it becomes standard with 16-gig already in it, comes standard with the RAID controller and things like that. We also recommend adding three more 16-gig modules, which would give you a total of 64GB RAM. Your current server had 16GB RAM, which was the low level to work with BSNA. We're recommending go higher than that, so it future-proofs you as well as it'll run better. Right now, when I buy a laptop, it has 16GB, a lot of times, so that'll give you a reference point. So that was unrespected. We're recommending four, which I talked about earlier, 600G drives, where the three, it'll be three in a RAID array, the first half of the data on one, second half of the data on the other, all the data on the third. The fourth one's a hot spare if any one of those drives dies, so that's a built-in redundancy that also helps protect your data too, because if one hard drive dies, even if two hard drives die, you're still up and going. So, and they're hot swap drives, like you seen in the picture, where like I said, I could come pop them out, pop them in, we don't have to shut you down. I mentioned earlier about the 10-gig Ethernet connection, I'm just more or less putting that in with the idea, I know some of the areas are gonna. putting that in with the idea, I know some of the people are going to put in a switch that supports 10 gig, so we're putting that in there to, to, to cover that. Uh, the next thing is what I mentioned before, this is an HP Essentials free, uh, three-year warranty, it's a 24 by 7 by 4 hour warranty. So what that means is, uh, we can do the warranty work for you because we're HP authorized, but if you don't want us to do the work for us, or if you guys think of us, or something happens to us, this is a manufacturer warranty. So you don't have to call ITech, you can call AHP Service Center or HP, it means that 24 by 7, they'll get somebody, start working on your problem within four hours of having a problem, which is probably important for the server. Um, the next thing on there is the APC Smartos 1500, that's that UPS unit I spoke about that comes with the, uh, Power Shoot software and things like that, it's just a battery backup, that's power surges, uh, brownouts, shuts your server down in the event that you guys aren't here. And then the last thing is, is the 40 hours that we anticipate this taking to install, so that's going to be moving your data from your old server to the new server, setting up all those active directories, group policies, setting up the Power Shoot software, making sure everything works the way it's supposed to work. So that's the entire proposal there.
Yeah.
Uh, so essentially what you'd be purchasing is new ML, uh, 110 server, Proline server, 64 gig RAM with a RAID, uh, six configuration hot spare, a UPS, and then the installation. It would have a three-year onsite parts and labor warranty, so for the next three years. The general rule of thumb with the servers are a replacement cycle of every five years. However, again, because of the type of work you do, that's not a hard and fast rule anymore. Most things are done through the internet, BSNA being one of them, so you're more limited by your internet access than the specs on your server than, or the specs on your, on your PCs. Uh, but, you know, with that said, you still should probably replace it every six or seven years, but that's why we do those quarterly business reviews. When I, when I do this, we have a, a software that's called Scalepad. What Scalepad does, which I hate that name, it used to be warranty master, which I thought was a better name. But anyhow, what it does is it looks at your servers and workstations and it can tell me when it was installed, how old it is and things like that. So some of the reports that I was giving you will say, hey, look, Joe, our server's now six years old, we should start putting in money to replace that server within the next year's time. So those are some of the things we discuss in the meeting, as well as showing you some of the things we do, behind the scenes, health reports and patching reports and things like that.
Gotcha. Now, on the second item of business, we have Hewitt Packer, HP, the Monza, did you talk about that?
Yeah, um, so I believe Vicky was having a problem with her monitor and sent an engineer out, going sleep mode. And I, I mentioned to her, I said, you know, the cost of a monitor is so inexpensive, it's going to cost you more than having an engineer come look at it than it would be to buy the monitor. So, so, uh, in doing that, they also noticed that Jen had some monitor, some lines on her monitor, where if you look at the monitors, it's not real clear. And I believe, I'd have to look, I think those are Acer monitors, um, that they have there, again, a step down from a tier one. We're recommending that the HP monitors, we use them all the time, um, just to replace them, I think they're like 180 something, I can't even remember off the top of my head, 180 something. Um, and they, they just last and they run, and again, that's why I mentioned too, you know, moving forward in the future, I think Jen uses two monitors, but I recommend it for a lot of people just because it makes your life easy. I used three when I was younger.
Yeah, from my, my job, I was Christ riding.
Right, and monitors are relatively inexpensive, you know.
Right, right, you can get them anywhere.
Yeah.
Early, I've got two, I worked at home, so I was too, looking to get a third.
I think it's me, so I wonder if you have.
All right, good, thank you for the explanation. Okay, how are you up on the handles and who's serving motion?
Yeah, I made one motion. I made a motion that we approve, um, the server for $13,369 and three, um, HP monitors for $569.95.
Yeah, I thought you wanted to move that to four when we talked the other day for the monitor.
I think we just decided to...
Okay, that's fine, I mean, we can do it anytime. I just thought when we talked the other day, you mentioned that you might want four.
Yeah, because we probably need a whole new computer.
Yeah, and we can do that. And I mean, anymore, we used to not stock a lot of things because we could get them rapidly, but with supply chain being what it is today, we had to stock a lot more, so we have those in stock, so we can usually get those pretty quick.
Okay, we have a motion for the server, a new server with a cost of $13,169.
No, $369.
I mean, excuse me, $13,369 for the server, and for the monitor, three monitors for, um, cost of $569.97. Maybe support for that.
Awesome.
Okay, we have the support for the purchase of the server and the monitors.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes. Yes. Gina, yes.
Joe, yes.
Connie, yes.
There you go.
Forgot the alphabet.
You always were used to me doing it.
Yes, because Dad's on your topic spot.
Yeah, well, I, uh, I've got... Okay.
We got two questions.
Yeah, four votes and the affirmative, uh, motion carries.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
For the question, we'll get that moving in that direction, it's with hospital.
Now we have another layer of protection right behind you, but...
Yeah, you mean, obviously you do that as well. All right, thank you guys.
All right, Jane, take care. All right, you're up there, Steve.
Uh, good evening, supervisor, statements and board.
I'm still getting used to that title. I still might look for the Belt Road map.
My name's Steve Sack Jr. with My Love Sack Insurance, uh, we're your current property casualty insurance agency, and hopefully you have before you a copy of the real proposal for the upcoming July 1st, um, uh, policy term. Uh, policy term lasts for one year. Um, I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible without putting you all to sleep, um, as exciting as insurance is. Uh, two parts basically here, I want to talk about historically what you purchased, what we have in force right now, and then a couple of recommended coverages that, uh, you can decide based upon your, your belief of the potential need. Uh, the insurance coverage afforded by the carrier includes general liability, public officials liability, employment-related practices liability, and hired non-owned automobile liability. These are coverages that respond if you are legally liable for damages based upon policy terms and conditions. Coverages include the defense of covered claims along with either bodily injury, property damage, or coverage for a wrongful act. Bodily injury and property damage, someone is hurt or something is damaged versus a wrongful act, somebody's feelings are hurt, or someone has experienced a financial loss, not that he injured themselves bodily or their property, but they, you've done something or maybe he had not done something, that they come back and they say that, that they're looking for the payment of damages. These are the basic components of a, of a policy for any, any business that operates whether in municipality or private sector. These are sold on occurrence form, so we make a claim, uh, when it occurred for the policy period that the, the claim occurs within. Uh, the other option is claims made, which we are not looking at for these coverages. Claims made deals with a trigger date of when the claim is reported versus when it may have occurred, um, and that'll be a distinction we'll talk about in a couple of minutes, we'll talk about the alternative coverages. Uh, noting Dr. Bullock is applicable to the afforded coverages, so if a claim occurs, the insurance company is going to start with the investigation, the defense, and the possible payment of damages, uh, without any, out of dollar or out of pocket expense to the township. Also, it should be noted that for the liability coverages, again, the general liability, public officials, employment practices, and hired non-owned auto, um, the township can elect to recommend defense counsel of your choosing. Uh, we normally see this with land use issues or employment issues where, uh, the township may have consulted or worked with their attorney, um, at the beginning of the issue, and for some reason it escalates and becomes a claim, uh, the carrier can issue the option of continuing to work with your attorney, or work with whomever you've been, uh, dealing with in defense of the matter, the investigation of the matter, instead of taking the file and handing it to somebody entirely good. Uh, the one thing the carriers ask is that the, uh, defense counsel, the attorney have prior experience in defending municipalities. Um, so this is one of the hallmarks of the program is that we let you work with your defense counsel of, of choosing. Uh, I mentioned land use, we provide coverage for zoning and both temporary and permanent taking, uh, known as constitutional, um, uh, I don't know, you're, you're in the, uh, first condemnation, uh, when there's a taking claim that's made, there's a supplement for a hundred thousand dollars for the, um, uh, per occurrence with a 300,000 aggregate. Those dollar amounts are dedicated to the payment of damages. The defense expenses are outside of those limits, as with the other coverage limits, so as we pay an attorney, or we pay to have the claim managed, we're not going to erode or attach to the afforded limits of liability. Uh, and I've got to mention, if there's any questions as we go through this, you know, while it's in your fresh, in the noggin, let me know, please, we'll address it at point down. Um, the, I mentioned the reverse condemnation, uh, employment practices, we include 50,000 for back wages and 10,000 for, uh, investigation of EEOC claims, people employment opportunity commission claims, uh, something that is not involved in damages, but you could incur an expense, we acknowledge that, so we set aside a specific amount to address those issues. So again, you're not getting hit in the pocketbook. Um, that's kind of my summary of the liability coverages, moving over to the other side of the house of the property. Uh, we're insuring, uh, the building here currently for $1,047,000 and additional $95,000 in contents, subject to a thousand dollar deductible, uh, replacement cost coverage, including $500,000 in business income and extra expense. Um, obviously, and the building values have gone up 6% over last year, I think, you know, we're, we're mindful of the fact that the, um, yeah, 6%, we're mindful of the fact that, uh, material costs, labor costs have, uh, been on a bit of a roller coaster, but generally rolling up or trending upwards. So we're mindful of that, we talk about replacement costs. Insurance policy is a contract. You have obligations to satisfy as is the insurance company. One of the obligations that you have is when buying the replacement cost, you're buying an hour amount that represents that value. If you don't, there's a penalty clause, so it's incumbent upon us to the age to make sure that we're looking at this on a regular basis. Joe did reach out to me about the remodeling here, um, really wasn't a concern for me about, because we didn't expand the size of the building, we didn't change anything material in the building.
It was cosmetic.
Yeah, it was, things of that nature, um, I think if anything, probably the windows, probably.
Yeah, we also, a new drainage field for the basement as well.
And that's not covered.
Okay.
Yeah, we, the, that is not part of the structure. Uh, if the drainage field doesn't work and, uh, water backs into the basement or causes damage to the building, we've got coverage for that. But to remediate or solve a problem with drains or drainage systems, that stops at the level of floor of the basement, and that's common with any, um, insurance policy that you see. Glad you brought that up. But if the system fails, or your sump pump fails, or there's a sewer backup in the building, um, we have coverage for that cleanup for the property, preservation of property, just as, but you don't have any sewer systems for your public here, so that's not an issue sewer liability, so. Um, we offer the individual position bonds that are demanded by state statute. The clerk, deputy clerk treasurer, and deputy treasurer of the state of Michigan says that those individuals, uh, fulfilling the duties of those positions must post individual position bonds. Uh, everybody else, we cover under the blanket employee dishonesty, uh, and crime coverages.
Um, Steve, is that because, um, because those four positions are handling money, is that...
You know, Joe, I've been doing this for a while, and I don't know what the rationale and lancing is for a lot of things, but it's always been on the books. The state has, I think I quote the statutes...
The sign checks for the township. Nobody else has access to money for the township, so that's why we're bonded.
The, and this is unique to general law and charter townships, it's always kind of a head scratcher for me. We insure cities, we insure counties, we insure special districts. It's only the general law and charter townships where the state comes in and says these people have to be individually bonded.
Yeah.
Uh, we just insured a, a city down in, um, Wayne County, uh, and the state doesn't have any guidance or opinion about cities. So what we do in that situation is we say, is there something within your charter that says somebody has to be bonded?
Yeah, well, I guess we're considered a non, we don't have home rule, general law township.
Well, this, those two acts apply both to general law or, and/or charter.
Okay.
So it's either or. But my point was, is you'd assume that if...
Somebody who handles much more money.
Right.
And many more residents.
Right.
Would have more employees.
But the, the, the state limits the statutory requirements to general law and charter townships for those four positions.
Kind of number government.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I do that out.
So try to figure it out.
We acknowledge the fact that we've got a cemetery, um, I've already referred to the public officials, the employment practices, the hired non-owned liability. Uh, we left off of the property coverages. Um, if you look on page nine and 10 of the proposal, I like to call that the bells and whistles, the property features and benefits, these are a collective bunch of additional items that they add in, um, ordinance or law, uh, commandeer property, portable computer equipment, that you go, a lot of guys go up by the laptops, we're addressing that coverage automatically. Um, coverage resulting from fungus wet rot or dry rot, uh, lock replacement money and securities, outdoor property, outdoor signs, we pick up a lot of those items in those endorsements.
That includes all of township properties, right?
Like, that's the intent, yes.
They're developing a park right now.
Okay, so, so as the, so I'm assuming, as I recall, you already own the land, correct?
Yes.
And the land is currently vacant?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay, so automatically, the liability coverage extends, but the minute you put a structure or a building on the property, we have to notify the carrier or identify the address to continue to extend the liability coverage.
Okay.
Then you have to decide if the investment that you're making for physical improvements reaches the threshold of the dollar amount that you want to insure covered. So if you're going to put a couple like park benches and a garbage can, you know, uh, but if you go out and you, um, put a, um, paved parking lot with an entrance gate and maybe a little booth, uh, monitor booth, or if you put in, um, you know, improvements that have greater value, then we want to start considering those for valuation for insurance purposes.
Right now, um, we're working on getting our first grant, and that's going to be the construction of a driveway off Fredmore Highway, and the construction of a parking lot, handicap parking area, joining walkways and a pad to put a quarter brush through there, so, and then we're going to hopefully get a second one, where we have a picnic pavilion, so, but we'll cross that path and grow where we get there.
Um, going back to my proposal, yeah, we have, um, $13,000 in dedicated coverage for the voting machines, uh, currently $6,200 computer equipment, um, but that is also augmented by, if you look back on page nine, we give you, uh, a quarter of a million, $250,000 automatically in the bells and whistles.
Why do they call it inland marine?
So historically, um, years and years ago, when insurance first started with Lloyd's of London with a bunch of guys sitting, sharing coffee and trying to figure out how to protect their products that they were shipping from the Americas or from the East Indies, the marine concept of this isn't a building, this isn't a, um, contents of the building, it's contents that may end in a building, but it's being transported. So the marine, uh, concept developed, uh, into an inland marine policy. The inland marine is the broad coverage for contractors' equipment, anything that's unlicensed and mold.
Okay.
So the classic example for municipalities... So the classic example for municipalities are the voting stations. These are things that are normally rolled, and I know that Bill always made the point, you know, they don't leave this building. But say you've got a, in the future, you've got a local church or something, so you open another polling station.
Right.
The intent is that equipment can be moved.
Yeah, I understand.
A lawnmower, I think you've got a tractor, tractor lawnmower. The, obviously, police and fire have, have a lot of that equipment. You more expansive DPWs with tractors and backhoes and things like that, that becomes the equipment that we list under that inland marine, the cap tractors equipment. I mentioned the crime coverage. The limits of liability close out there, so we've got the underlying policies that each offer a million dollars in coverage. Then we have the excess policy that caps on top of that for an additional three. So the township buys a total of four million dollars of liability for any one occurrence. If you have a general liability claim and we pay damages out of that four million dollar tower, that is dedicated and separate from, dedicated to and separate from the other lines of coverage. So the payment of those claims will not attach to or erode the other lines of coverage. And then each year, we reinstate that million dollar plus three million dollar limit. So if you've got a couple of bad general liability claims, then you've got an employment claim, the payments of one line of coverage do not impact the other line of coverage.
That four billion, that per occurrence?
Yes, sir.
For just that four billion?
Yes.
You spend it down to nothing?
Per occurrence, per line of coverage. So if you think of it, I mentioned those four coverages, general liability, public officials, employment practices, and all liability. Each one of those has a occurrence limit of four million dollars.
Okay, okay. All right.
All right, so that's the, and then the fun part of my job, last year, your premium was seven thousand seventeen dollars. The renewal is up five hundred and two dollars or seven thousand five hundred nineteen. Dealing with some of the increases in the property, dealing with the hardening insurance market, but I'm pleased with that dollar amount. And then we have an additional four hundred dollars, one hundred dollars each for the individual bonds.
Okay.
Now I'm going to talk about two other coverages that we've recommended or included in the past, and obviously, you've got a, a real life.
Yeah.
Example of, of potential exposure. First one's the easiest one. After nine eleven, our government adopted a policy to create a backstop for insurance companies in case of a catastrophic claim that occurred as a result of terrorist acts. The act had to be defined as terrorist by the federal government, and if so, the insurance companies could basically go to the government, go to us, for a bailout, if there was a catastrophic claim. In order to fund this, our, the government said, okay, we're going to add a tax to the insurance policies. And if you don't have that payment, you're not going to be eligible to collect if there is a certified terrorist act. The act was first written, I think, in two thousand twelve, as Washington does, they don't leave anything alone, they've modified the act now, I think, three or four times. The big thing for consumers is, the original act was just foreign terrorist acts. So from that perspective, the concern about a foreign entity, a foreign government, a foreign agent, creating havoc in parts of middle America was probably slim to none. But the feds enhanced or added on domestic terrorism. So now we have foreign terrorist and domestic terrorist acts. Historically, the township has not secured that coverage, and the quote for the terrorism is an additional one hundred and sixty four dollars. Again, optional coverage, this is the federal government must declare the event as a terrorist act, whether domestic or foreign. Any questions? All right. The next thing is the data compromise and cyber liability coverages. If you look to your proposal on page three and four, we give you two options. Coverages are the same, it's the dollar amounts of coverage afforded, one is a hundred thousand dollar aggregate, and the other's a two hundred thousand, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar aggregate. Cyber policies are a hybrid policy in that they respond in two ways. They respond with coverage to help you correct the damages that occurred and the expenses you incur internally because of a intrusion in your system, malware attack, any unintended third party action that locks down or creates damage to your system. So these are expenses that are incurred by the township to get the system righted again and operational. The other part of this coverage is, on your system, it's assumed that you're containing what we call personal identifying information. You may have credit card information from residents, you may have employees' social security numbers and dates of birth, you may have other information that if in the wrong hands, may expose those individual parties to potential financial loss. So you've got a liability along with the potential expense that you're going to incur directly. So we look at that, that coverage also here. So they combine the two into the, the coverage form. I mentioned earlier about the currents form, this is a claims maiden form. So what we see is that when you finally figure out something's gone wrong, the bad guys maybe have been secretly in your system for more than one or two hits. So instead of having to put the burden or the onus upon the community to say, when did this happen? It's when you found out about it. And then we use that data as a trigger. Just very quickly, the data compromise includes first party malware, forensic IT, legal review, public relations, regulatory fines and penalties, the PCI fines, I think, deal with credit cards, there's a thousand dollar deductible. And then we go to the cyber side, where they've got the attack and extortion coverage, the network security coverage, and the electronic media, media coverages. Even though you're seeing a hundred and fifty thousand and five thousand for these individual items, the total aggregate would be a hundred thousand dollars a year for this coverage for that option. Page two, we bumped it to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I know that you've had experience here, I can think of only two other clients that have had an issue. One was, and this is public knowledge now, the Macomb County Health and Human Services Department, somebody got into their system, and of course, they have the personal identifying information of the people that they're providing treatment to. They have social security numbers, they have dates of birth, they have health insurance information, they had all kinds of stuff. And what the policy that they purchased from us responded to was that forensic audit. They brought somebody in to determine how far, how in-depth the bad guy's got. Because of that personal, personal identifying information exposure, the county, as the township, had a liability to report to the, the feds, that oops, we've got people that are potentially exposed. So it was the burden on the county to determine if the exposure occurred. Fortunately, it was determined that they got in there, they identified, you know, that they were in the system, they didn't get to or didn't access that information. So the insurance company provided certification that in case the, the feds ever came in and did an audit, or any state regulatory agency, which I don't know if there is one in Michigan, but I'm sure there's, there's laws, I think, now in Michigan, but I don't know if there's, I don't know how they're enforcing them, but what, what agency is responsible for that, other than perhaps the Attorney General. But, so the, the value of that was, here's your certification, that information was not exposed and you're all set. That cost about sixty thousand dollars to go and have that audit performed on the system with that, that scope and size. We've talked to people that said they know they're going to get hit, you know, whether it's today or tomorrow, that the bad guys out there are becoming more creative, you heard the fact about putting patches together, this has become a very big part of that industry, I understand. And I, I'm the number two mechanical pencil and legal bad guy still, so I'm, I'm ramping up on this as, as much as I can. But the patching becomes a very important consideration, because the bad guys are always looking for a way to get in. And as Fender explained, you know, Microsoft and Oracle and these guys, they're out there putting together corrections of this as quickly as they can find it. So that's the importance of doing those things.
Yeah, and we are in a global, global information thing. I don't care how much people, whether they're not, they are.
You know, I, the, I, I think this is a.
Thank you.
We're in a situation.
This is a, we've.
Just sit here until.
I was about ready to nod off.
In our capacity as insurance agencies, we find ourselves pushing more of this product as a respond to people's inquiries.
Yeah.
This product from Trident is what I would call a basic product. Joe, you may recall the form that we gave to fill out, asked about five or six questions.
Right.
And that deals with the fact that the limits are, are basic limits, a hundred and two fifty. And the, the carrier response kind, if you're looking for a more sophisticated policy form, they're looking for multi-factor authentication, they're looking for the nature of your firewalls, they're looking at the nature of HR policies, which is becoming a very important part of cybersecurity, is, you know, how are you working with your employees, what are you allowing them to do, what are you not allowing them to do, what, what do they have access to? That becomes a big part of the evolving cyber underwriting process. The applications for the more sophisticated products change every six months because they're adding in, you know, we better ask this question, we better ask this question. And what started as a three-page application is now a fifteen-page application. But again, that's for organizations that have more, a broader exposure than I think what you're doing with PSNA and, and communications.
Yeah, we, a lot of our information we handle is public, you know, is public information. However, we were, we're working toward to get for, to allow residents, not to pay with credit card, they'll take taxes or building permits or likewise, so we would like, you know.
You see, then that's, that's, that's an exposure.
Yeah.
Once you, once you take possession.
Yeah.
Of that information, not only you occur liability, but then you've got a regulatory responsibility. So this goes back to the example I shared with Macomb County. The regulatory standards that they had to be able to respond to, what was the level of this intrusion, what got out? And if it did, then there was a next level of, we've got a list of these people, we have to notify these people, and then we have to offer certain remedies to these people before they even think about making a liability claim against us. So that gets into the, the response expenses that come into play. Any questions?
You have, you have two different actions here. What's the difference in cost between a hundred thousand and two hundred fifty thousand?
So if you look to my cover letter, the last paragraph of the front page, and I'll read from this, I'll just read the paragraph in total for the benefit of the public here too. Another elective coverage offered by Argo, who is the insurance company, is data compromise and cyber. See pages three and four of the proposal. These coverages afford both recovery for first party losses and indemnification for third party losses. Coverage supporting claims many basis with separate aggregate limits for both data compromise and cyber. Depending upon the option, a one thousand or twenty five hundred dollar deductible will apply to cover claims. Please refer to policy form for terms, conditions, definitions, and exclusions. The additional premium for data compromise and cyber is one thousand eight hundred eighty eight for the one hundred thousand dollar limit, and two thousand nine hundred thirty three for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. Higher limits and possible broader policy forms are available public carriers. The pricing for those two are pretty much in line with what we presented last year. That eighteen, matter of fact, I know that eighteen eighty eight is identical to what was provided for the one hundred thousand last year. I don't recall what the two fifty quote was last year, but that is, that's an ultimately stated. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
If I wanted to make a little slight adjustment, it's probably not that big of a deal, but I'm thinking for the voting machines, we probably need to go up a little bit higher, because we only have three tabulators, where I think before we only had two.
Okay.
And we also have a, they call it a BAT, which is a voter assistance.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have three regular tabulators plus the BAT. So I'm thinking we might need to go up a little bit higher than that.
All right.
Probably not that much of a difference, but.
Okay, so I'll shoot you an email, and you can provide me the details, and we can.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm sorry, there's just a, that inland marine premium is only seven thousand one hundred and eight dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's not that significant.
So we have for the basic, to renew the basic policy, what we had.
Correct.
Set up the terrorism insurance and cybersecurity, that's the one where we had to make the choice of which one.
Are we doing it for a premium tonight, or are we doing?
The policy renews on July first.
Yeah.
If you choose to, as a fourteen, if you don't meet before the first, I would automatically renew what you have now.
Okay.
And then wait for your decision if you want to consult with Dan or, or get the fighters on this, or come back with new questions. But the, I do take that back, I think this, the way that the feds work with the terrorism coverage, you have to let me know about that one before the renewal.
Okay.
But this, but the cyber, we could add on during the policy year.
Did you have a question?
I do. Is this the only company you're getting a bid from?
This is a banner carrier for, Steve, how long you been at her?
Well, I understand that, but at some point, we all need to.
So we're an, we're an independent agency, and we look at Gladfeltor, we look at Trident, we look at Liberty Mutual, and we look at.
So you're just providing them a contract, they decide which one? They don't go to another agency to get other information?
Again, I'm an independent agent, so when I do my due diligence, I'm going to more than one insurance company.
Carrier.
And, and, and asking, and presenting them the information about Costco saying, please take a look, please give me a, an indication.
Some pricing.
Liberty declined because their minimum premium starts at twenty five thousand dollars. Gladfeltor, their indication was in excess of ten thousand dollars.
But they have that information from the different companies?
I do not, I did not present that this year, no.
So they don't know which one you're going to go?
They're, they're going with the one. They're, they're going with the one that we're presenting here for the renewal, Argonaut.
I see. Without access to the...
I could certainly, if, if...
I'm just saying, is there a comparison or not? All of us should be doing this with our insurances.
And, and, and we do that, oh, the other one we have is the, um, the Power Plan Program, the HCC. Uh, we have access to them. So, you know, when we're looking at these coverages, and that's something, too, we not only compare the price, we compare the coverages. And a couple of things about the Argonaut program that, in my opinion, uh, provide greater value are the inverse condemnation coverages and the, uh, ability to select a defense counsel and the separate towers of liability. A lot of the carriers, uh, for example, the Power Plan, they give a single limit. So it could be exhausted by one line of coverage at the detriment of the others.
Well, shouldn't they know that?
And we, while we have dealt with Power Plan years ago, we've gone through, um, various carriers through the years, and this company does the deepest due diligence for us.
That's my question.
Yeah.
I mean, because to me, listening to him, it sounded like this is just a renewal. Why are we talking about this?
Well...
You're not comparing anything.
Well, we have to renew by first of July. We're covered.
Yeah, we all have renewed, they, yeah.
Yeah. My question would be, how soon does the clerk's office and the building office want to initiate credit card acceptance?
Well, we have worked on that, well, we haven't really looked into the bulk of that.
I have a couple of different companies that I need to look into as far as which company you go through. Uh, PSNA uses a certain one, but...
So this would, we, this would not affect the taxis this year?
It might, not July, probably.
Not July?
No, because we have, we have elections, so...
Yeah, we could, we could maybe ask for like in some counter or so, you know?
Some of your outside, um, credit card companies that you choose to process will provide that PCI compliance to. And it'll all depend if they're going somewhere to process it or are they handing you their credit card.
Yeah.
Like, if you're offering somebody just a site to go to, then you're kind of cutting out you being the one
Responsible.
Willing that card...
That liability. Because she with our software, with our building software and stuff that we use, what we do.
They may even have that insurance built in.
Well, and High Tech also, their software, if you're gonna go with them, they can put parameters in place where you can encrypt any card coming across the phone verbally. That's what I do all day long. I went for TruGreen.
With who?
TruGreen.
Tru, TruGreen?
TruGreen Long Care?
Yes, okay.
Yeah. We're international now, we're up in Canada, we're all over the US. And one of the securities that we have, because I work remote, I work from home, my internet, T-Mobile, and I also have Frontier as a backup. But with the software programs that you're using on your system, it puts in those parameters so it keeps that credit card information safe. That's, I was really impressed with High Tech. Oh, I really like that company.
We are, too. We are, too.
Okay. Let's, uh, what, your choice you got, um, you wanna act up on the terrorism insurance right now or postpone it and discuss it more or...
Well, you said we could do the cyber stuff after, we can do the terrorism.
The terrorism right now, yeah.
So our meeting next will be after the first, so we're gonna act on the terrorism. We need to do that today.
Okay.
So we're looking at a hundred and sixty-four dollars for the inclusion of domestic terrorism. That's, that's the quote we're looking at here. If we, and we're not going into, we're going to think about this Argo data compromise and cyber.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. May I motion for some sort of action there?
Well, I would make a motion to, uh, renew with Nickel ZF for coming here, um, with the, uh, with the proposal before us and include this time, which we have not done before, the hundred and sixty-four dollars for the premium for terrorism coverage. And, um, I will leave open the Argo elective for later discussion.
Okay, um, what's the dollar amount for the renewal on the insurance?
It is seven thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars.
Seven thousand, okay. Five hundred and nineteen dollars.
Plus the four hundred for the, um, bonds.
Four hundred.
And the... It is billed, it's billed because they all expire at different times, so they send different money. Should we add that in there? They come separately, so that's within my, the bonds come separate, we get invoice that separately. Like, my bond expires differently than yours, so I get billed at different times and it's a hundred dollars, that's within my...
Okay, well, we can...
I already have my bond from the year.
Okay, so we can leave those off and just do the basic coverage and terrorism coverage?
Because I'll just, yeah.
Okay, is that your...
I'm, I need my bond by July the first.
Here's a, it's an...
It's in my...
Right, yeah. What I'm saying is that's within my spending limit, so, and it's because it's billed at separate times, I don't think we need to get into this motion, you know what I'm saying?
All right.
With this motion.
So your motion is for the basic policy of seven...
Seven thousand five hundred nineteen dollars.
Plus the premium of the insurance, um, and terrorism coverage.
A hundred and sixty-four.
I'll support that.
Good. Sam Bochin, uh, support for renewal in, um, our insurance policies with Nickel ZF for basic coverage of seven thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. And the terrorism coverage for a hundred and sixty-four dollars. Okay, roll, roll a vote.
Anderson, yes. Jayden, yes. Zensky, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, we have four votes in the interim and motion carries. Okay, we'll get back with you, uh...
With the server.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's any questions and if you need me to discuss, provide any details to your tech folks so they understand the breadth of the coverage. That's really how we've spent a lot of the time, um, looking at this product of clients is going to their tech people and talking to them.
Right.
And making sure that they understand what's, what's being provided.
Yeah. Yeah, we gotta mull it over and see what fits, fits best for us. And, uh, but we are, we are interested, though.
I see.
Yeah. We'll, we'll avoid unhappy experience like you had.
You know, we didn't have a lot.
So, all right. Well, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. And if there's any questions, of course, you guys can run it over and, uh, very good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'd be glad to hear it, sir. All right. Moving on. Okay, let's see. We have broadband survey, Mr. Dennis Cott.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Uh, I'm sorry I didn't get these done in time, I gave it to you guys earlier.
Thank you.
But I threw together a little synopsis of what we're gonna talk about tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Part of the reason that, that we're looking at this was, there has been, uh, as part of a background, there's been a, a recent release of, of a huge amount of funding from federal government, forty-two and a half billion dollars about two weeks ago into NITA, which is the National Telecom Information Association. They are gonna administer all that money and they're gonna give that money, you know, a hundred million dollar, five hundred million dollar chunks to each of the states that have set up a, a state broadband office. Michigan has, they started back in May looking for a director and they were supposed to fill it on May twenty-ninth, but I haven't had a chance to look at their website to see. There is an office now of state broadband and apparently there's a spot for a director and maybe like a secretarial assistant type, type person. So those folks are gonna be responsible for looking at, uh, on a more local level, when people like Comcast or Duke or Frontier come to them with a project and say, we want to build X, Y, Z over here and we need so much money to do that. That, that will come out of, out of their top or responsibility. In the old days, previous to this, under like REA or RUS, Rural Utility Services or Electrification Administration, all that was handled through Washington and they had local engineering talent that went around and, and checked up, made sure that everything was being the way it was supposed to be and signed off and that. And this time, they decided that that wasn't working very well and it was better to let the local scene handle the actual distribution of the money. And then once they had used up their allotment, they would go back to NITA, NITA would cut them another check for a hundred to five hundred or whatever until they, they used it up. So with that, the office is supposedly opened on June first. The reason for a survey would be to, uh, especially from an independent, like what we're proposing to do here, is such a, there won't be a, supposedly a bias in it. And the incumbents that are here, so in our case in Casco is, uh, mainly Comcast, Frontier, uh, T-Mobile, um, and I think Verizon has part of this
Perhaps.
power down here if I, if I remember correctly. So those folks could come forward, say, in the case of, we, we know we've been looking at Duke Broadband on Sinclair, who's grassroots, new guy, he comes in and puts in a, a request for, uh, a grant. They can all, uh, you know, go against that grant, say, no, you don't need, we don't need that, we're already providing excellent service here and there. So the survey would be able to show independently, uh, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, what is actually really available. The maps that are, that are available, and Dan had mentioned the maps, and I want me, because the maps are, are a republication of what was provided by Connected Nation, in this case, Connected Nation Desk, Michigan. And the, the map information was provided, it was kind of like, um, what's the thing, you know, the, uh, the person that's got the key to the, to the, to the well is also using the well or whatever, so the information that was used to drive those maps came from the service provider, it's like Comcast. So if you look at this township, if you look at the township where I used to live, Richmond Township, it shows the entire township is covered. Uh, you can go stand on the corner where we used to live at thirty-three mile or the low plank and, and look in any, all four directions, there is no surface there at all, just as there is in a lot of spots.
Black hole.
Yeah, I think the black hole, right, a lot of spots within, uh, Casco. So they, they started a new thing, the FCC recognized that and said, all right, uh, we're not gonna accept these maps as they are any longer. They've set up a new, uh, program which starts June thirtieth. And everybody needs to put in, so, all of the information of who they're serving and where they're serving, uh, to this database in the FCC, who will then generate a new series of maps. And, and that will then supposedly be more accurate to be able to tell where it's unserved, where it's underserved, and, and where it's served well. The current, yeah, the current, uh, basic standard to go for a, a grant is to be able to design your system and engineer your system, provide a system that does a symmetrical service, one hundred megabits down and one hundred megabits back up. So that's like what we think of in, in terms of a phone conversation, it's full duplex. You could talk to me at the same time I can talk to you, we've both got the same amount of bandwidth that we're both able to utilize at that time. Typically, what we see is not, is not that way because it hasn't been, it'd be the cable TV industry came out of cable TV, the main thing was to get content to the end user. So you have a, a pretty good sized pipe coming down, but you have a little tiny pipe going back up, uh, whi- which doesn't help the situation. So in order for them to protest somebody else coming into the area, they have to show that they can at least make the bare minimum, which is now designated as one hundred megabits down and, and twenty megabits up. That's, that's all, all in the background. What, what we've started to do, or what I've, I've started to put together is, uh, and I've, of course, I'm looking for input from you guys, but it is, the plan would be, we need to involve and encourage residents to take part in the speed test. Uh, I've got in this package, I took, just put together a draft letter that I would say we could send out from the township, a township letterhead. If you guys review it and you think it's right or it needs to change, you can change it any way you, you'd like. Uh, we'd send that out, I think when I spoke with you, Colleen, at one time, you had mentioned twenty-five hundred people were, so that's where I came up with the twenty-five hundred number, just, you know, uh...
That would, yeah, because that would be the basic township, that wouldn't be Ravina, but the basic township.
Right.
Would be about twenty-five hundred, that's a little more.
And we, I mean, it could go more or less, I'm just, you know, because I don't know, but I'm just... We'd also look to engage whoever the webmaster is, that sounds like, maybe that might be Jay's company now, High Tech, so that they could put on the, the website, the similar thing, maybe a short form of a letter.
Yeah, we have someone else who does that.
Or, okay, well, see, I don't know, so I'm just, I'll, I'll put together the things that I, that I'm aware of that. But so we would need that webmaster to put something on there that would then also provide like the, the QR code that someone could scan or the URL address of where the test is located at. So that would be one thing to do. Do we even, do we use Facebook?
Yes.
I don't use Facebook, I'm not on Facebook. I was on Facebook, but I got off through a bad, bad screen, so...
It's probably because we are constantly...
So I, yeah, I don't use it, but... So similar type thing, you would probably look to put same type of information again on Facebook. The idea is, all right, you wanna, you wanna try and get as many people to, to, to participate in it.
Right.
What we're able to do thus far is there's a thing called Google Forms. And Google Forms lets you build a form. And while I'm not that well versed in it, I have a person that worked for me in a previous life, who's now, uh, Mr. IT at, at a company up in Sandoski, and he threw it together for me in about a half an hour. And you can go on there and it has several simple questions that it is included as part of the attachment in the rear. There's a, a opening remark, it asks you for your name, it asks you for your address, it asks you for what your carrier is at this point that, that you're using. And then it asks you to go through this speed test. And you click on that, it takes you to the speed test, speed test rugs, it takes less than three minutes typically to do a download, an upload, and what we call a ping test, which is a, like a delay. You come back to the Google form and you put those numbers, those three numbers, and download it, it'll say what was your download speed, you put a number in there, what's your upload speed, you put a number in there, what was your latency, you put that in there, and you get sent, and you're done. And that goes into a, a spreadsheet, typical like an Excel type spreadsheet.
Right.
So that, that whole thing gets presented in that way. And we could, once we would get that all done, for however long we would run this test program, process, uh, for, we put that together, we give that to you guys as a completed project, you know, and you would have that, the township would have that information now. So if you decided to continue to work with Duke, or you decide to work with somebody else, or, or you decide to work with one of the incumbents, you already have the information, they're gonna need that to put in a grant application. So, so this would be like getting ourselves a step ahead.
A useful tool.
Was that?
A useful tool?
Yes, thank you.
Very much so.
This was, remember, uh, last bump when we had that thing from, this is first, yes.
Yeah, this is instead of...
Yeah, I talked to, um, Mr. Duke, Mr. Budud Coombe, Duke Broadband, what's his first name?
Dave.
Dave, yeah. And he, he was saying, he was saying, um, Dennis here is more capable of collecting the same information and putting together what we need in order for, companies like a new broadband event to go after the grant to bring the high-speed internet, and, and, but, um, what we're, what we're looking to do is, we recognize you can only spend a dollar once. And so this we could do very inexpensively compared to, it's not maybe as formal as what we had seen, but it, it would probably... as what we had seen, but it would probably serve us just, just as well.
See information.
Yes, if you look at, there's a copy of the letter that, and it's just a draft, it's a suggestion, I'm not, you know.
Yep, we can work on that.
There's the sample behind that is the sample broadband form, that's the Google Form. And you notice it says on there, your email, what is your name, what is your address? Please go to https://speedtest.net and run the test, which takes again about three minutes or actually a little bit less.
Okay.
You come back and it says, what was your download speed?
What was your question?
This is, this is where I'm at, I can't get the print out, this ain't going to be some paper.
What was your download?
What was your upload speed, what was your ping, and then again, who was your current provider, and submit. And, and they're done. So we don't want to make it real hard for people to do it or hard enough, I think that's, that's pretty straightforward. The last two pieces of paper, again, because I can't get the darn thing on, you know, I can put the stuff in, like the wire again, as you heard me mention, the UPS, but I don't know how to make the applications work, so. So this last two pages is a picture of my entry, of my test from my house, my PC in the living room on June tenth at twelve-thirty in the afternoon, so it was at lunchtime. This is the kind of information we would get back in a large, a large Excel type spreadsheet. So that anybody looking at it in terms of.
Everybody in the township, which isn't in the trailer part.
Right.
And that, yeah, for as many people as want to participate.
And I like the fact that you do that mailing because there are some residents that are not tested.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
And, and would have difficult times addressing that. Maybe you could have a go-to person that if that resident wants to participate in the survey, but needs guidance.
Guidance.
Maybe you can refer them to a particular person that would be able to go to their.
Help, yeah.
And help them.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Now Dennis, I noticed that you didn't have any kind of proposal for cost of that. I didn't, because again, I'm looking at it as a resident of Casco. I want to help, I think I can help. But as you saw just now in my presentation, I'm not that well gifted with applications and how to make the applications work. I know how to wire the stuff, I know how to put the stuff in, I have a background in, in it, and I, and I have ability to, to work with my friend, ironically, his name is Ray also.
You're there.
Oh, Ray, Ray Worth is Sandusky. So I am, I'm not, I'm, I'm willing to simply help and work with, with you guys, that's what I want to do.
Yeah, but also too, this is going to take some time.
It, it will take some time, certainly in printing, the letters and mailing them and.
Right, we don't, we wanted to, I mean, if you volunteer very generously, you know, your, your talent, your time, but also too, we'd like to.
We'll do the feelings and.
Well, we could, we could talk about.
Better things.
If, if I'm, if we move, we want to continue to move forward as text back.
Yeah.
Who, who on your side should I be looking as a point person to, to interface with as well? For say like, for, do we need to change the letter, do we need a, you know.
Okay, good.
Do yourself, yeah, okay. That sounds fine, I'm good. I, I, I'm sorry I didn't get quite as far as I had hoped. I was hoping to be able to demonstrate the QR code, you know, those little codes that they didn't see? You take your phone and you can hold it up to, hit the button, and poof, you're there.
Okay.
I was able to make it work at home, but when I printed it out on the paper and tried it just now from the parking lot, I couldn't get it to work on my phone, on my phone. So I'm, I'm not quite as far along as I was hoping I would be, but I, I think in shortly I will have a more workable solution where we say, this is, this is exactly how the Google Form works, this is exactly what you'll get when you go there, and then we can look at it.
Okay, well, we'll work on it, and next month we'll have something more formal, hopefully, that we can put up with board here and hopefully get it underway.
Good.
Yeah, alright.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a fun thing, you know, to, because you want to keep learning.
Right.
And that part of it too is to learn what the stuff is about.
They were fortunate, we got these residents who are experts, like you with the Broadband, and we had Chuck Gibson with the Gypsy Moth, I mean, so that's, shows the kind of valuable talent we have.
Well, you know, and that, that's what the important thing is, to me, I think, is looking at the grassroots. Everybody knows something and, and can be an expert, if you will, in something.
Sure.
We're all working together for a common good, which is for us, for Casco, to make things better, make it a better place to live and a better place. This lady works from home, there's going to be a lot more people working from home. We got telehealth that's going to be out here, I mean, I'm sixty-nine, I'm looking not to drive in February down to Henry Ford and have something done for twenty minutes when I can even talk to him on the phone on a Zoom type of app, you know.
Wonderful.
Okay, alright, good. Well, we're going to have no way, I think, because I'll be next.
Yeah, I will be back.
Dennis, good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And Dave, you talked very highly about your.
Thank you.
I like working with Dave too, he's, he's very knowledgeable, he's a very easy person to get, to get in the call, to get in the long.
So I think that's good, I think, alright.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're good, thank you so much.
Okay. Our next thing is. We have.
Did you give me the back message here in the front?
There you go.
Okay. Okay.
Should we dance or sing?
Well, the, actually the phone, we have mobile phones for township inspectors, I mean, for township officials.
Who's getting a phone?
Well.
You are, I don't.
No, no.
I'm looking at you.
The clerks.
Don't be public.
The clerks, we're at a conference.
Just close to the guard.
And they recommended that any township official that uses a phone should have a township phone for the township business in case he gets subpoenaed. And right now we have.
Fun of that.
We've identified five people, myself, our building inspector, we have our two clerks, and was it one for, just, and one for the clerks, well, two building clerks, and then one for National Clerk's Office.
What?
When we went to our conference, they suggest the state of Michigan that you do not use your personal phones for any type of township business. If there's any kind of litigation, any kind of.
What is, what is, in the building department, please, is their personal phone?
They send pictures.
From their personal phones?
It's all pictures of properties and stuff like that.
Right.
Yeah. Any kind of information, text, in, anything, anything, anything business related. Because if you do anything on your personal phone, it has to be the township and anything where it happened, they can take your phone and subpoena it.
Right.
And they will.
Well, they will.
We've heard stories.
Well then, don't be doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So who's going to get a phone?
It'd be myself, Roland, Brenda, Katie, and the clerk's office.
Does the website, the Facebook stuff, all that.
Yeah, Katie showed.
And I've texted her in, in the evening and asked her to post up on Facebook and.
And Katie's showing me the things of concerns in the township, they reported to her or she taught, and she's, showed me, reported to me, so, same we would bring that as well. So I kind of, because we're Comcast, we have a thing, we have three, what's it, three plans here? Because I'm not familiar. One day plan, a fifteen dollar a month, a three-day plan for thirty dollars a month, or a ten-day plan for sixty dollars a month.
And I think, I think this is what I'm gonna do.
What's the, oh, second page?
Yeah, so five lines if we have a four.
So five lines, one hundred and forty a month? Okay.
Is this in addition to that? Oh, this is the unlimited, okay.
Okay. And this one here. Okay. So we have a new unlimited with five G for a hundred and forty dollars a month for five lines. Okay, and then we have, I gave you a thing on the phones. Okay, I misplaced mine. Okay, my Twenty-First Century Advisor, AKA Katie, she, she advised me, both phones are really good. We have one, the Galaxy A, A fifty-five, A fifty-three five G for, at eighteen dollars a month. Eighteen dollars is a four seventy a month. And we have the iPhone SE through generations, they're at seventeen dollars ninety-one cents a month. We may have full price, the first one is four hundred, four hundred and forty-nine dollars ninety-nine cents, and the second one is four hundred and twenty-nine dollars ninety-nine cents. Also, we could take pictures and send texts and all that. Okay, do I have any other things to make a motion to select the?
What's, Colleen has to discuss.
No. I just can't imagine somebody using this on a basis, on a monthly basis, that would require this instrument to be by your side at all times.
Well, then, then this is what I suggest, that there is no phone calls, no texts, no nothing, past three-thirty to anybody, so that means if Roland needs to get ahold of somebody after three-thirty, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because, I mean.
I mean, she even has all the, you know, the camera stuff, the, I mean, you have all that on your personal phone.
Yeah, I have all that on my personal phone.
You need a phone, the security stuff.
You mean the cameras.
I have like all the security stuff on my phone.
The cameras here at the hall.
So if something happened, like even say for elections and, and someone had a goblin or whatever, they could get my phone, that's all my personal stuff on my phone, that they could have access to.
And Roland, certainly, he gets calls.
All the time.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I know, we did our fortune.
Yeah.
Ever seen a man put it up front fortune in February in Michigan?
No.
He uses his own.
His personal phone.
We get from phone allowance though.
Yeah.
So if, if we pay for his phone, then he's not going to get a phone allowance, we just pay, you know.
Yeah. And if we get called.
And so Roland's going to be walking around with two phones now.
Well, he has two phones, one for work.
We went to that conference and almost eighty percent of the people there had two phones.
And there was about three people that said that they've seen it happen where someone's phone gets subpoenaed.
Well, we had that one time when we were here with general supervisor, we had a lawyer here who threatened to subpoena my doodling that I was doing during the meeting. So he was.
Don't be doodling in the meeting.
Yeah, and, and I, I would like, and also a supervisor, I would like to stay in touch with the residents at twenty-four seven, if necessary.
So emergency comes up, you've got to be.
Right, so.
Well, and also like the alarm, I've gotten a call from the, from the alarm company at nine o'clock at night because the alarm went off.
Yeah, yeah, so.
The times they are changing.
I know, I was just here watching you while they were talking, and I could see the cameras.
I'm sorry, I, there's just a few people on your list I can't see making a phone call at any time to anyone for any reason that comes with a picture or whatever. But we'll see it your way for a while.
Well.
Well, we can, we can adjust your lists, we can postpone.
Yeah, postpone, let's think about it.
We can postpone, you wait.
We want, I want, I want phones in here, I want phones, I want cameras during this election process.
That's why I have the cameras on.
Absolutely. And that's what we have.
We can postpone.
We can, we can postpone.
We can adjust, we can.
Yeah.
Well, you're not going to erase my doubt about it, so you might as well go ahead and vote. And I'll, I'll see it through.
Well, if you want to adjust the list of people to get it, then we can do that too.
Yeah, how about let's.
No, that would cause more trouble than it's worth.
How, okay, how about we postpone this till next month, give you time?
No, that's quite alright.
Well, I don't want.
We'll postpone and this is.
You seem uncomfortable with it.
I am uncomfortable with it, I'm uncomfortable with the entire Twenty-First Century, but.
So, that's, that's just the way it goes.
Right, no, that's a good point.
I'll make a motion to postpone because Dan's not here either, we could get his input. We can postpone it till next month.
Alright, do I have a support for that motion?
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and support to postpone the discussion on the mobile phones for township employees until, until I leave.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For votes in the firm, then, motion carries, okay. That was almost like Patton when he slept on, oh, I need the Twenty-First Century when he was in North Africa.
Well, I bet he did, that was not a good place to.
No.
No, he was talking.
During World War Two?
Yeah, okay. Okay. Our next thing is, our next item of business is contracts for township inspectors.
This is going to just be more of a discussion. When we went to the Clerks Institute, there was HR training, and they said that we should have contracts with all of our inspectors.
Yeah.
Right now we only have contracts with.
Roland?
We don't even, Roland's on, Roland's on, we have an employee.
Oh, so these, oh.
Shelley is the only one that we have, and Steve, and Steve.
Yeah.
So as far as building, we need Kelly and, and Bob.
And Bob.
We need to do some type of contract. So we're going to contact the lady that did the, the training because she said she has contracts that she can email us and we can put our information. We're doing everything and reinventing the wheel, we'll just do that. So I just wanted to bring that up and.
No, I, I, when I was at the trustees convention last fall, they said the same thing.
Yeah.
And they, like, they, 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 and word, like, stuff, so.
Yeah.
And.
So it's past time.
Yeah, it's a layer of protection, protects everybody involved.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good deal.
We'll work on that.
Alright, next item, G, ballot box cost adjustment.
I'm going to make this meeting real quick because we're going to just scratch that off.
Okay.
Because I actually, I was going to do two ballot boxes, I was going to do a new ballot box up here, and I was going to do a drive-up. And we, we approved this two months ago last month.
We did.
For three thousand dollars, because I'm using the, the election brand to pay for it. I have since decided I'm just going to do a drive-up one, and it's less than three thousand dollars, so we're good.
So good, okay.
Just concept.
Excellent. Okay, next one is appointments to the construction board appeals. Several years ago, a few years ago, we had construction board appeals. We're told to stand up in case if anyone had a problem with one of our, the inspections, our, our work, our inspect, the work our inspections were, inspectors were doing. So we have, we'd have to have a board of appeals, so we had three individuals. Well, that was allowed to lapse, I need to stand this up. We have three people, Mr. Lyle Ballard, Robin Carous, and Mark Uplander. I like to, I recommend that we do a two-year term to the Casco Township Construction Board Appeals starting one July twenty twenty-two, ending in June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. All three men are licensed builders, and our bill inspector Roland Suisse says they are all excellent in what they do, and if called upon to serve, I'm sure they'll do due diligence.
I make a motion to appoint Lyle Ballard, Robin Carous and Mark Uplander to a two-year term for the Casco Township Construction Board of Appeals starting July 1st, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Lyle Ballard, Robin Carous, Mark, Mark Uplander to a two-year term to Casco Township Construction Board Appeals starting 1 July 2022 and ending June 30th, 2024. Do I have support?
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, four votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Okay, next. I would like to appoint Sue Coppins, the Casco Township Plan Commission, with a term starting June 15, 2022 and ending December 31st, 2023.
I saw who.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve Sue Coppins.
Before you change your mind.
Don't change your mind, please.
Casco Township Plan Commission with a term ending June 15, 2022 and ending December 13th, December 30th, 1st, 2023. Sue, what have you comment? I have one. I said, we're impressed with your here with your work and experience.
It was just so much coincidence too.
Yeah, and it was a happy coincidence too, yeah. Because with us, the.
Bringing back all this money, it was a long time ago though. It was 20 something years ago.
Yeah, but still.
It still ran on like, why remember lots of ups and downs and there's still state pressure right now with that money is building a public pier.
Right.
Public pier to the whole city or the whole metro area.
Oh, right.
With the, the, but they got a grant to match.
Of course.
So it has to go to everybody. So there's still drama that tails out from these things. These things don't just begin.
Well, with our, with our development.
There's always hoops.
On Marine City Highway in the spur of county line uptight 94 and we talk about stuff like Tifa district, you know, the so it's, it's valuable to have someone who has some experience in that. And plus is also satisfy our board representative, plan commission, one for another, maybe the other thing. So we're able to get that. Okay.
It's gotta be a team effort.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, all right. All in favor of appointing Sue to plan commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four votes in the affirmative, motion carries. You have your first meeting.
That's next week.
Yep.
I have one.
Okay.
He's there, he's there.
They got air conditioning, like what?
Yeah, exactly. I'm bringing my coffee.
Yeah.
Oh, carrying.
I, yeah, I can go look for the coffee.
All right. We have our next one, item J, clerk stipend for additional duties. Jennifer, would you like to?
Do you want me to read my letter?
Sure.
Dear board members, in the last two years as clerk, I have assumed many different jobs and responsibilities that do not usually follow to the clerk's office and are not part of the clerk's statutory duties. Finding and dealing with the contractors for the hall repairs is a huge example. There were many times that I had to come to the hall on weekends to let contractors in to do their work and stay late to lock up after they left. When our previous supervisor was not in the office or not available, I stepped up to do what was needed to be done for the better of our township and the residents. The cemetery will be another large project I will be taking on soon. There will be a lot of work and research required to get our cemetery up to speed. There have been residents that have come into the office in the last few months and entwined about buying a plot in the cemetery. Unfortunately, I had to tell them that we needed to do some research to find out where the plots are available. It's quite embarrassing for us as a township to not be able to give them the information they requested. I am also the main contact for our new IT company. They call and email me frequently for information, some of which is not readily available to me. I'm also the main contact for the alarm company. I was instrumental in getting all of our new video cameras again coming in on weekends to let contractors in. I'm requesting a one-time stipend of $8,000 to compensate me for these duties, $5,000 for the hall repairs and coordinating with the contractors and $3,000 for taking on the cemetery project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, I can tell you this, being a new supervisor, coming in, Jennifer has been instrumental. She took adjusting, preparing for the budget, which normally falls under the supervisor thing. It was left, Jennifer handled that. So when we did have our budget here and we had the budget good to go for this fiscal year. I've been here, I've seen you down here with the contractors, yeah, and the cemetery, that's gonna be. You know, at first I think, you know, because we had to put a new fence, but that's simple stuff, it's the records, it's gonna be the paperwork.
There's two drawers of records that.
Do we not have that plot that we were given a couple of years ago?
We have a mess.
Is it not relying on?
I don't know. We're gonna have to go and actually sit in the library, or library. We're gonna have to go to cemetery.
I took a ride.
She wants to help.
I do. I, I took a ride in there and who, who, who does the upkeep?
We now have DNE, is it DNE?
Yes, DNE.
Okay.
Yeah, and though.
Because it looked really good.
Well, they do a wonderful job.
Yeah, on the cemetery too, if you ever need guidance on it, our, the cemetery manager at St. Michael's Cemetery, Maria Delaney, she's excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, I worked with her. For St. Michael's.
Some of those old.
And that's the thing.
Yeah.
Because we don't.
We don't record the deeds on.
Yeah, we had a guy several years ago who did like a survey of the thing, but I, but the lot. Yeah, but a lot of the paperwork.
I mean, we have stuff in the 1800s.
Yeah, the right to burial.
It is very cool, but we wanna display it one day.
We just wanna make sure where those bodies are.
Oh, no. Why would you wanna do that?
Also too, when you have a grave, when you buy a grave, you don't buy real estate, you basically buy a right to burial, which is a legal deed for.
Yes.
And it's important because we had someone at St. Michael's Cemetery who wanted to, they had a grave for their loved one, but they said, nah, we don't like it here. So they took someone else's grave and buried it. It was cremains and buried it without consent of the cemetery. Well, technically that's stealing.
Yeah.
And we had to, and we had to have them move it and they had one of these arms that was biodegradable, so we had we have someone to scoop to pick it up. But they, but it's, it's a serious issue.
And unfortunately, what we ran into before.
Yeah.
When Mr. Young called for a burial and they weren't sure where their paperwork was.
Yeah.
Where Mr. Young needs a certificate before he can transport that. And yeah, that was a difficult, difficult situation for those people involved and.
And it's emotional.
And they're, well, it is at the time.
It's not the time to have to, you know.
You know, that's terrible timing when somebody passes and you've got.
They all help you on that project. I think that's a very worthy project to get. I'm so pleased with DNE.
Yeah.
They're doing a good job. You know, it's, it's.
And we're gonna get us one of theirs.
Sign up and. And then maybe we can do the yearly placing of flags when we know who was military.
There were some flaggers.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I know someone that could come do the bagpipes.
Aye.
Oh, but Jennifer.
Just saying.
Yeah, Jennifer spearheaded building renovations plus going through the records and cleaning out that
boxes and boxes and boxes.
It was a nightmare.
It was 20 years ago.
Was a nightmare.
So.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, it's like I said.
I'll do a little scrapbook so we can leave it out for people to see. I have lots of pictures.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I've been very fortunate, covenantism. Even though I've been on the board, I wasn't supervisor. It's a whole different ball of wax being supervisor.
What year was Casco Incorporated?
Like that?
What year was Casco?
1849.
Founded in 1849.
We were split apart from China. One time China Township went from the river all the way up to county line road and they split it up into Casco, Chi, China and East China Townships.
So can I ask a question from earlier that I wrote on here? Just because I knew I was gonna be elected to the planning board.
Oh. Yay.
Feeling faithful, right? And we're confident. What, you made comment earlier that Ravina, not took with Ravina compared to basic township.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking.
What's the difference between the?
I'm just thinking that because they're.
They're all communities.
A small community.
They're a small community that maybe Ravina itself has, like they, they have their own, which look super water, maybe they have. But if they don't, then they certainly should be included.
But they would sue the survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. They was, if they, if they had great service in that corner, they would sue.
Just say they were all Comcast.
It's right at 27 and going on, yeah.
I get it, I understand why you said that.
It's so spotty here and there and here, but if it's concentrated, then that's, that's good for us.
It would make it faster.
Yeah, but it's not gonna look good.
Okay, but we have a, a, yes.
Grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have citizens combat section.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Kelly, you're so smart.
Yeah, I wanna keep it moving there.
For being in 13th century.
All right.
I'm 60 this year, okay? I'm right there.
I haven't seen 68 years.
Um, we have a, we have a request here and I would like to see if we can get some action.
All right then. Since we have all seen the tremendous amount of work that the clerk's office, Ms. Jennifer has done on our behalf and Ms. Vicky as well. I would agree with the $5,000 for the hall repairs and coordinating with the contractors.
Do I need the cemetery later date?
Well, the only reason why is that I, I think Dan might have some insight on this or might want to say, this is fine with me. Both the, both the $8,000 and the $3,000 are fine with me because I know, oh my Lord, I know the work involved. I didn't even think it would, could be done.
Yeah.
I didn't think it could be done. But it was done and it was done in the shortest amount of time. And dealing with the contractors that helped everything moved right along. And the cemetery project, that's going to take a lot of investigation. It's going to take a lot of preparation. I would hope that we would all pitch in on that. It's something that we can all spend time in our offices doing. But for somebody to spearhead that project, yes, I would, I would appreciate the leadership on that as I have for the hall and the contractors. So this is fine with me and I will make a motion to grant the request of a one-time stipend of $8,000 to compensate for these duties that really were far over and above the office of the clerk.
I will support that.
Okay, we have a motion and support to give the clerk Jennifer Anderson a one-time stipend of $8,000 to compensate for the duties for the hall repair, and I think coordinating with the contractors and $3,000 for the cemetery project. Ro call vote.
Can I, can I vote?
What's that?
Can I vote?
Yes. Yes. Anderson, yes. Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, we have four votes in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for.
Who knows your name?
All that you have done, the vote. It can't be said often enough.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We really are grateful for your investment of time and interest. Yes, you are a very, very good.
And your deputy.
My deputy is the finest.
Yes, you have your team? Two good teams.
That's right.
Linda, any parcel she knows who owns.
She, oh, yeah.
Is there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it's incredible. Okay, good deal. Who knows who had to get into the cemetery, we find out this is a bigger choice.
Well, I think that's what the case is going to be after. The, I think that is going to be the case and that's why you're gonna need help. But it's an interesting project, I would need.
It will be interesting.
And it will be, it will be of great use to anybody who is interested in genealogy.
Yeah.
You know, we get those people all the time.
I've been on the cemetery committee there at St. Michael's for 30 years now. I find it fascinating.
Isn't it? Don't you think? It's the history of Casco.
Yep, okay, the next one is, we have a letter from our, one of our building officials here. Dear Township Board, I have greatly enjoyed my time since I've worked at the township offices. And that time since I've started, I've taken on, including the building clerks that also took on additional responsibility maintaining all the township social media and website, as well working with elections and becoming an election specialist. With added duty, I would graciously make a request for $2 increase to my pay. I take it $2 an hour, right, to increase in pay. I think you'd consider.
It wouldn't have been worth it.
Thank, thank you, Katie Holt. And Katie, I think is a fine addition to the township, I think.
She, yes.
Yeah, she's learning a lot and she's learned how to break down. And do you have a question?
No, I have a comment.
Okay.
I never do this if I have a question.
What's your comment?
In order to preserve the union, I would like to postpone this. I would like to have a further discussion on our policies, employment policies. And talk about this a little bit further if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay, in regard to just.
Preserving the union.
Okay.
Nice, great question.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, okay, we could postpone this till further discussion.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't need for postpone to make motion.
I, we can just do it, just to be.
Just make, someone make a motion.
Okay.
Give me, give us a month to go over policies and salaries and duties.
Yeah, that may not be such a bad idea.
And.
Yeah.
And the general composition of the office staff.
Maybe we need to just have an office meeting.
Perhaps so.
Yeah.
That might be nice.
Okay, all right, okay, we have a motion to postpone this.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion and support to postpone the discussion on the pay increase for building clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Okay, a discussion on building fees. Roland came to me, Roland, our bill inspector, he was saying that he had recently, on occasion, people start construction on something, they don't get permits. He was wanting to double when they get a permit, since they, if they didn't get one initially, to make them pay double instead of the building permit as is.
I agree. I agree with you.
Aye.
Yes. I think that is done every other township.
Well, okay, I just wanna put this, I talked to our attorney, Chris Anderson, and she says that's fine. A lot of communities do that. When someone starts constructing on building permits, when we get a hold of them, they, and we force them to get a permit, they have to pay double. She just cautioned us, if we're challenged on it, it's hard to defend.
One thing I would suggest is to get yet another sign just like we have at the corners of wherever we put them that says, this is a zoned community, building permits required. Put it right out there near the parking lot so they can see when they walk in, if they're walking in to, you know, say, duh, duh, duh. We have these signs posted everywhere.
Okay.
In what community can you begin to dig a basement?
Well, yeah.
Without a permit.
But yeah, people with a mentality, you know, better, you know, to ask for forgiveness and permission, you got, you know.
Those kinds of people who rather ask for forgiveness than permission deserves the double fee.
Right.
But I'm just.
I'm sorry.
I'm just caution you on this, if we double the fees, that if we get challenged, it's hard to defend. That's what our legal. I'm just cautioning you on this, if we double the fees, that if we get challenged, that's what our legal...
Well, I, I just don't think the request is unreasonable.
Okay.
I mean, you might, you might not want to say a hundred percent. You might wanna say it's gonna cost you fifty percent more. You can, you can put that down to another percentage.
Roland recommended double it.
Wouldn't he just give a fee?
A non-filing fee of an additional... You just can't walk in and expect not to pay anything extra, wouldn't you? I can't believe anybody would start to build anything.
I, I don't have the, um...
Have you met my neighbor?
Yeah.
Do we have, I don't have the, the fees with me right now, so can, um, we can just...
Well, you can, you can say double the fee, or you can, uh, do a percentage.
Okay.
You don't actually have to have a fee schedule down here to do that. You just have to agree that nobody who has started a building, started, you know, digging a basement...
Okay, if I could get a motion to, um...
I'll make that motion.
To double the fee.
Do you think, alright, to double the building permit fee?
Do we know what our most expensive fee is?
Yes, I don't have that in front of me.
Like, you had any idea?
Would it, does it...
Construction's more expensive.
Well, and does it, does it depend on the square footage of the building?
No, we don't do it that way.
We don't do it that way.
No, there's a flat.
So, there's a flat fee, well, that makes it even easier.
She would just say double.
You just double the flat fee. But I would, I would put another one of those signs right out here in the parking lot.
Maybe we also need to post it on our website and on our Facebook page, and say, if people want it, start immediately.
We're not here to, to go gotcha, that's not our job here. Our job here is to protect the neighborhood from a house starting that's either too close to the road, too far to the road, to the side, to the side, you know, whatever the ordinance is, but they need to follow.
Okay, all right, okay, so you're making a motion to double, um, the motion was made, and we had support to, um, double the, um, the fees for someone who starts construction without a permit. Okay, do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, good, and we're supported, all right. Okay, item M, we have a, uh, a letter from our bill inspector Roland, um, sues. Due to the amount of time I spend on this job, I request a pay increase of five hundred dollars salary per month for office work, along with frequent phone calls for questions and answers to problems and the like, that arise throughout the week. This would be in addition to my inspection pay. My schedule is such that I will take care of problems outside, outside of our four-day work week on Friday or Saturday. I find the quicker we handle a situation, the better it is. The office has been running approximately eighty, my office time has been approximately eight hours a week. Also, phone calls have been taken on a daily basis. The seller situation would work for me as a flexibility. Yep, Roland sues.
Well, then. I'd like to know what Dan, what Dan's input is on this as, as well, since we're short a board member.
Okay. If we'd like, we could postpone it for another month. Can we get a phone call, I mean, a phone, slightly?
I, I think the whole board should vote on this.
Okay, it'll, it'll go hand to hand.
I can say that I know he's done the office a lot more since, since he moved. He moved his office since Katie's here, and there's not a lot of commotion in the morning.
It helps him, doesn't it? And when he comes in early, so he can get in the door early.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, can I, can I make this contingent upon, because he might, you know? Can we ask Dan over the phone for a vote? So that, well, we have a quorum, though, we don't really need to do that, do we? We don't need to do that. I just, I don't want him to feel like left out. You just kinda have to...
Okay, so you're recommending we postpone this for...
No, no, if you think that it isn't, um, if it isn't necessary for Dan to have a, a say or a vote in this, if we have a quorum on this, then I would go ahead with it. He has been working very hard and in the office, a whole lot more than I have ever seen him.
There's a couple times when he's in the morning and the afternoon.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
And Roland...
Almost frightening.
Yeah. Roland also keeps me informed of any issues that could involve the township. You know, away from the inspectors and the greater stuff, so I really do appreciate that.
Well, and you know, and I, I think, I think in this day and age, and I say this day and age, the last two or three years, you really begin to realize the importance of people who show up to do the job, you know, and we have those people, they show up to do the job.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you're making a motion to, um, to increase, um, the bill, the bill inspector fee of five hundred dollars salary per month for office work?
How's it going?
Okay, we have...
Plus he gets that phone, Jesus Christ.
We have, we have a motion and support to increase the bill inspector salary fee, five hundred dollars a month per, for office work. Any further discussion? Ro call vote.
Anderson, yes, 'cause it's Kaczynski.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, four votes and affirmative, the motion carries.
And you know how much more paid for work? How many, how many new housing starts would you say that we have this year, on top of the Ravina builds?
The building of our mansion.
It is, you can't imagine, you can't imagine. We're gonna have to build a fence out of this place.
Okay, two, two N. Okay, last month I requested, um, a five fifty-dollar fee to be charged for any building plans not submitted, folded, not rolled in or rolled. I'd like to correct the language, state that all plans, in addition to building plans, it would include site plans and any other special plans submitted by the townships, to the township's building department. Okay, so, yeah.
And we had that sign right up on the building office wall, didn't we, now?
Yep.
There's been a couple people that walked in with their lunches.
Right, back out the door, and all those plans in their cars.
Okay, we made a, we made a motion, do we need to make a motion on this, to correct the language?
Probably.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion that we, um, change the wording to, um, include all plans.
Okay, we have a motion to, um, correct the language, state that all plans must be, um, full bit, not submitted or rolled. Do I have support?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have MTA dues renewal, Michigan Township Association. This is the professional, uh, association Casco Township belongs to. Um, they cover, they advocate, on behalf of township government up during the halls of Lansing, they also provide service, support services for their membered communities. I use MTA a lot, I call them up, probably every other week on some question concerned, even when I was trustee, concerned township matters. And, um, they're requesting our annual dues for three thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents.
How much? Thirty-four hundred and fifty-four. That's about what it was last year.
It was, wasn't, didn't go up, but... Well, without the legal help that we can get from them, yeah.
Plus they offer classes and...
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion to renew the, um, MTA dues for two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three.
Okay, yeah, from one July, one July through thirtieth of June, so...
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and support to renew our MTA fees for three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Any further discussion? Ro call vote.
Anderson, yes, Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, we have four votes and affirmative, motion carries. Okay, we have a township lawnmower we'd like to sell, um, it's a, it's a zero-turn mower, so, um, a simplicity. We got it off of Zimmers several years ago.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, and I was looking at it, I was, I would, it's a smaller one, but I would, I would, we could advertise it for two thousand, we're best offer.
Is that, I, I don't know anything about lawnmowers, but, well, I was on the simplicity lawnmower. This one just bought one, yeah, and it was seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, um, this, yeah, this one is used, it's a smaller version.
How many years?
Well, that I'm not sure. It's a smaller one, because they used it on the cemetery, they need to...
To get in, in between the...
Don't we have two of them already?
Yeah, we have two lawnmowers.
It's got an hour meter on it, it says how many hours.
I think we should.
Yeah.
We have lawn service.
So, yeah, yeah.
We don't need it, we just...
I'm not sure about the other one, if it's a hundred and forty, so I have to give it, um...
There's no dent in it.
There's no dent in it.
No, the one resident was looking at it, and there's the whole bottom, there's no blades or anything, so... It's just a rite.
It would have looked something like this.
Yeah, they would have left it from quick.
Well, you know the Casco Township sale, you couldn't put it out there?
Well, that's true.
Now, well, I'd like to...
I mean, you could use that for towing a cart, or, or whatever. I know, truly.
Okay, maybe you should have...
Well, hold on, first of all, zero turn, it's the only one by the other one.
So, is the zero turn, well, why don't, why don't we put it out? Where's the one say, over the night?
Yeah, it's coming up.
How do they have, like, research and price?
I'll, I'll, I'll stop, Zimmers, we bought a Zimmers, I grew down there.
And see what they would suggest for resale. Let's do that, just so that it's not overpriced or underpriced.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm willing to bet probably about two grand, I'm willing to bet.
Yeah, I, I would...
You're willing to the hours when you call on it, that's a big difference.
Yeah, we'll postpone this.
That's a good thing to know.
I'll get some rest.
Okay. I'd probably find the original stuff.
Okay.
We probably have it somewhere. I, I think I have it in there.
Okay, we, we bought it six or seven years ago.
I'd be interested in it when you send it, if you post it somewhere.
Okay, move, moving on, okay, this one...
We could call you.
Do a motion, I'll make a motion to postpone it.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone discussion on, um, this lawnmower, any support?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion and support to postpone the discussion on the lawnmower. Any other discussion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, for most, the votes in the motion, and the affirmative, motion carries. Okay, the next one, okay, this is, this has to do with our old IT service, okay? Last month, as you recall, we asked them to bill us, our service with network computers ended on the thirty-first of March. We had a ransomware attack the first week of April, okay? We weren't under coverage of them, but we asked them, if, to hire them to help us recover our information, which they did, and, um, we asked them to bill us. And, um, at first, they, we paid, which we paid last month, was a bill for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Then we get sent another bill for eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents. I think, my opinion, I think he's angry because we didn't renew with them.
Exactly.
And now with our new service, we're finding out a lot of substandard material was used, and, um, their procedures, I just have a problem with this. I contacted the attorney, our attorney says, get our new IT provider to look at buildings even reasonable. Well, he doesn't know exactly what, so it's been unfair for him to comment. However, I was talking to their tech rep, and the tech rep says, what he can do, let, he has to recover some of our information still, and he could, no, make a list of deficiencies of what network computer had in their system, and some of the things they, like, they talked, Jay talked about that port not open where we got hacked. I wanna them to assemble a list like that. I'll send, we, we'll send the list to Chris Anderson, and Chris Anderson will contact network computers.
I think that would be the wisest thing.
Yeah, I have...
Sherlock Holmes, yes.
I have a big problem with this, they've had, gave us bad service, to shine what we showed.
Some part of the equipment. Well, and if you look at the bills, the description is pretty much exactly the same, except they upped the hours on the, on the, on the one. So, it's like, okay, we paid you, but now, as you're saying, you know, you put in more time. Well, you said right here, you only put in this much time.
And we did not recover the information that we paid to recover.
And if, if they would have did what they needed to do, we would have never handled it.
We would have never had to. Plus, we paid the ransom.
Yeah, they left open port on the thing, so...
So, I would say that this is...
Okay, all right, so...
Most of our money's spent money in port.
Yeah, I don't want to avoid that, I hope that I could, a letter from Chris Anderson will save. So, um, I guess we just tell, um, high-tech, hey, let's, let me send a letter, I mean, a, a list of...
Yeah, deficiencies.
Yeah, deficiencies. Okay, all right, unfinished business, we have a resolution we need to do, and this is having to do with what we passed last month for our, the lottery, um, resolution we did for the gambling golden retrievers.
I think that sounds like gambling on the...
I was trying to see a golden retriever.
Well, for the gold, the Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club, they needed to get a, um, a license from the Michigan Lottery Commission in order to have...
A raffle at a dog show.
Yeah, to...
So, to do that, I had to come to these guys and say, I'm the treasurer of the Fort Detroit, do you recognize us as a 501(c)(3)? They agreed.
Right, and we had a, we had a, what we didn't do is, we didn't have, we had to put for township an official resolution number two.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so...
And for that, you've sat here for the last four and a half hours.
No, actually, I came for that.
I didn't even know that was on here.
So, what we need to do is add a number, right?
That's all we needed to do.
So, I'm in motion that we, um, add resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-thirteen to the Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to, um, the resolution two thousand twenty-two-dash-thirteen for the, um, the charitable, I mean, for the license for the Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club. Do I have support?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any other further discussion? Okay, we have to do a roll call vote on that. No, we don't, no?
No, I don't. I just forget the number.
All right. Okay, we, all those are favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have four votes and, um, affirmative, motion carries. Okay, let's see, board comments, I have, first of all, does the board have anything? Jennifer, do you know?
No, just, I, I just had, uh, we had, um, no, that's not it, yes, it is.
Okay, the same clerk, counting parts in the rest commission?
Yes, we just filled out, and they, auditors filled out, um, they checked the interest scores and grants and all of that sort of thing. And then we just have, every year, we put in a, a little sentence that says how we're progressing with the part, and, uh, you get an authorized signature, you name it, you send it in, and then they will send us this year's village money. So, I think, though, that, I, I think we just have to put the, no, we might have to, we might have to do this next month, uh, because it's a date of a local governing board. So, uh, whether we approve this in next month's meeting, because we just got this, we just got that today. So, we can put it on next month's meeting for an approval, if you will, and then we'll get our money for this, uh, village.
All right. A few things, first thing, the park update. Right now, they're getting very close to here. I gave everybody a letter here about, we're getting closer, we're getting approval from the Michigan Department National Resource to allow us to bid publicly for contractors to start. So we, our office is finalizing the drawing package by the end of this week. This is our park planner Pam Blough. We'll provide a township a set of drawings for your review at the end of the day on June seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. Next week, our office will finalize remaining documents that are required, which includes a bid document, sealed drawings, and any changes requested by the township, a sealed cost estimate, and updated project schedule. We will complete this no later than the twenty-fourth of June. Okay, once complete, we will upload all these materials to the PSV website on migraines. Migraines is the P and R website that you apply for grants. The township two five will confirm and change its status as the last step. And Michigan Department National Resource staff then will review the drawings and authorize the bidding. At that point, we'll assist the township in bidding. A formal notice to bidders will be need to advertise and document, and the documents formally posted for public access. Local bidders also can be notified by the township to encourage bidding. Once bidding is complete, Michigan Department National Resources is notifying, and the bid information is submitted, then Department National Resources and the township board approves the bid, and the project can commence construction. All right, so we're moving on there. Any questions? Okay, next thing, Marine Corps, Marine City Highway Corridor Study. There's two things here, we posted on the website. You could do a stakeholder survey. You go there and they'll ask you things about what township you're from. And it goes through a list of questions about what you expect on the corridor there. So you just want public input. They're also gonna have a public forum on June twenty-nine at six PM at the Lions Club of Marine City, five forty-five Ward Street, Marine City. So we have this group, planning group employed by the county looking at the development of Marine City Corridor from County Line Road all the way to Marine City. Into, yeah, King Road. So they're looking at it about different things, about services, utilities, and what we can do to develop the corridor for an economic expansion plan. So this is a multi-year project. We've been, Colleen and I and our, our plan commission chairman Keith Ringer been going, I mean Keith Teltow, been going to these meetings. Okay, there's a lot of, water's easy to put down, Marine City Highway Sewers is a whole different thing. They could be decades off on sewer. They have challenges on the Combe County side with the size of the sewer systems. And what I find interesting in that last thing, the population of southeast of Michigan is not expected to grow. It's actually expected to decrease a lot. So you're just having the population spread out more. So we're dealing with that. They're looking to develop this corridor for entities to come, large plots of land to set large developments. So, I don't know. To me, there's a lot of unanswered questions. The one thing I have concern, that corridor doesn't go nowhere. I mean, it goes Marine City, but a lot of your successful corridors go somewhere. If you go up I seventy-five, that's going north, or if you're ninety-four, or the M fifty-nine, those go further. And that doesn't. I ninety-four up through Chesterfield Township goes up the port here in Thum. I mean, that's a place, but it's not a big growth place. The development in Chesterfield was spurred on by the prison on twenty-sixth Avenue. They had to put a big sewer line and water lane. That would spur that development. I've had planners told me if that didn't occur, that the development up through Chesterfield Township wouldn't have been extensive as it is now.
Yep.
We have the president thanks for that. So it's, it's gonna be interesting. This is something that's long-term, but there's a couple of opportunities for you to put your input and, and just check out our website. You could go there to get the link there to do a survey. Okay, I've asked our planner to have two post ordinances. The first one is to modify our site ordinance to allow electronic sites for certain uses in the agricultural district. We have one for the church going in, St. Paul's there in Peters. At first, that was a mistake, but we, it was a happy mistake, as it turned out. We had a request from the golf course there, Michigan Meadows, County Line. I told them to hold on. Plus, we're gonna be installing a sign here. So I asked our planner to look into development thing, and the plan commission will be reviewing that next week. The other one is to modify our blight ordinance to cover donation signs. We had that one up near Tommy's Party Store.
Oh.
Yeah, and I looked at our blight ordinance, and there's nothing that covers uses like that. So I asked Steve to draw up an amendment to the ordinance on that.
Yeah, I noticed that they used to have those over where the old Smoko Station was by Kroger. But they're not there anymore. Those are the ones that went to Tommy's.
Could be, could be. Okay, there's been a request for eighty acre solar farm on the Wismann Farm there on Marine City Highway between Palms Road and. They, they're looking, they're quite earnest of doing this, an eighty acre solar farm. It would fit in well with the development of that corridor. These are entities, I mean, it's the, like, the twenty-first century that we're so uncomfortable.
It will also increase our industrial.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's one thing there could be an issue with.
That will throw off our.
Yeah, yeah.
That's something, we have to see how that goes.
Right.
We can only have so much industrial in the township, so much commercial, so much this, so much that. And if we took the scales on the industrial portion of it, we might need a new level of assessor. We might need a new evaluation of the entire industrial district in the township. But, you know, I'm sure the state will look kindly on an application for a farm of this sort. I just don't know quite yet what the ramifications are for the rest of Casco Township.
Understand.
So the solar farm on the bricks, who does that benefit?
What's that?
Who does that benefit? It goes into a grid, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it goes into a grid.
It goes into a grid, but if it's an eighty acre solar farm in Casco Township, does that power going into the grid benefit your Casco Township residents?
I don't know about the grids. I don't know where it goes.
It goes into the grid.
I don't know where it goes.
Well, and that's the thing, if it were.
It goes onto a power source, but what it does do is in decrease our industrial, our agriculture.
Our agriculture, yeah.
So it switches that agriculture to industrial?
Yes, and that's, that is not conforming to our zoning. It's spot zoning, and we don't usually do that. But I have a feeling that this is very, a solar farm is very much like other types of farms that have been approved by the government, by the state of Michigan, and will usurp our zoning. And that could be, we don't know.
We have ordinances, we did a few years ago, that yield, um, with small, medium, and large solar farms.
Solar farms.
Yeah, I gotta see about the zone that name that, uh, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll have to see how it works. Because I know of two other people not in Casco.
Yeah.
That were possibly selling to a solar farm. That never happened.
It never happened.
Years.
Right, right, right.
Up in the Thum, they got the wind farms, and all the time agricultural land, so.
So we'll just have to see.
Yeah.
We, these are things that we just never dealt with before, so.
Twenty-first century.
We're learning about it.
All right, next thing there is road commission where the Palms Road Bridge is expected to close. It was already expected to close, but they were put on hold because they had to wait for fish spawning was complete. So is it first of July or they're gonna, they're gonna?
First of July until September something.
Yeah, September.
We're gonna try to get this done before the school buses roll again.
Yes, so the Palms Road Bridge, we're getting money, but it's a Michigan Department of Transportation project. They're gonna be paying for it.
Between Fredmore and Sinclair?
Yeah, and the bypass is Hessin Road. So that's the official bypass.
Woo!
Thank God.
So, okay, and another thing is there, if you go down Church Road, they put a big barrier across because it's, the culverts are collapsing more, and there's people bypassing it, so there's a big old barrier now that goes down.
There are collapsing cars.
People were asking me, why are those culverts failing when other culverts are not? And it's a simple reason. Those culverts were placed in the mid-seventies. On Division Road, there's a culvert that was replaced a few years ago that was replayed. That was put in the same time as nineteen seventy-five. There's a culvert here on Melgrimo that was probably sometime in the sixties. I can't remember a bridge there. In the seventies, mid-seventies, bad steel got on the American market. And that's what's happening there. You know, there's other longer culverts, like there's the, um, Jerome Drain along Church Road. That's a big, long culvert, about quarter mile long. That's still fine. But that was from nineteen sixties steel, not that mid-seventies steel.
Right.
So that's what, and it was supposed to be done this year, but there's a twelve inch gas main along Church Road. They had to reroute it, and the lead time for valves and different stuff is a long time. So it will happen in the summer of twenty twenty-three. So Church Road will be closed for time being, well over another year. At least between Sinclair Highway Division Road. Okay.
Okay.
All right, you know, I neglected, I, because of all the stuff that, I, there wasn't some comments at the end, but we also allow citizen comments at the end here, because anyone have any comments?
No, no.
I know you guys comment a lot here.
Well, I just wanna say you seem like a good team. You seem like a very good team.
I'm surprised Jim was so quiet.
Come on, Jim.
What I see in the agenda, I know.
I ain't seen nothing, man.
Just home stuff. Imagine if they wouldn't have postponed all that stuff.
And they have computer stuff. Everybody's going to sit down and move for what they can talk.
Okay, all right, anything else? Okay, all right, we're up for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn at nine forty-three PM.
We have a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-four.
I'll support that.
And we have support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Long meeting.